Good morning. Today is Tuesday, March 12th, 2024. This is regular meeting of the Kings County Board of Supervisors. Madam Clerk, please fill the role.
Joe Nevs.
Here.
Richard Valley.
Here.
Doug Verboon.
Here.
Rusty Robinson.
Here.
Richard Fagundes.
Here. Okay, all members are present today, ready to conduct business. Uh, right now I'm looking for the pastors, our work for us. I was not here, so it looks like it's uh my duty, so uh would you all have any pride for your location?
Dear God, we come here today, ask Him for Your guidance, wisdom and support as we begin this meeting. Help us engage this meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group and nurture the bonds of our community. Amen.
Today we have a new fire chief, I'd like to present Salvador Flores, what do you think is going to fly through?
Absolutely, good morning, everybody. Okay, ready, begin. I am glad we're taking this supply. And two, stands, one nation.
Thank you.
At this time, we're gonna do employee recognition, and we have uh Dave Robinson.
I'll go ahead and kick it off.
Uh, we have Curia Martinez here.
So the board established an employee recognition committee in nineteen ninety, and the committee is responsible for nominating employees every quarter based on their exceptional performance and achievement across various departments. The nominations undergo a review and voting by the committee, and the committee respectfully requests that the board acknowledge and reward the employee of the quarter with a certificate and check. So the employee will receive an additional three hundred dollars on their paycheck. So this quarter, it's Sergeant Christina Morris. She has been selected the employee of the quarter, and I actually pass it on to Sheriff Robinson.
Thank you, Carrie, appreciate that.
One over.
She was the first one here today.
Good. I was almost last, but not quite, so. Sergeant Morris is the, is the bread and butter and backbone of our administrative area when it comes to jail operations and the administration of backgrounds and hiring and facilitating uh the things that it takes to keep the jail running. And so I was uh super excited to see that she was nominated for this award, but even more excited when she was actually selected. And so she's a very private person, so this probably bugs the heck out of her being here this morning, but um I can't thank you enough for everything you do for us day in and day out to keep the facility running. As your board is well aware, staffing is always a big challenge in the jail facility, and she works extremely hard to try to keep up on the backgrounds and the hiring and the, the process that it takes to bring people on and onboarding. And so without Christina, we would definitely be in a worse off situation. So congratulations and thank you, appreciate it. Thank you both.
You want sir?
At this time, we'll go into unscheduled appearances. Any person may direct order at this time on any item on the agenda or any other items of interest to the public. Two minutes are allowed. Does it have anybody online that would like to speak?
I have written correspondence was received from Los Angeles County sanitation districts, and the board did receive copies, and it will become part of the permanent record for this morning. And the first person that's going to speak is Curia Martinez.
Good morning, Curia.
Good morning, board members, Curia Martinez. I actually wanted to take this moment to introduce our fire chief. He actually started yesterday. And so I just wanted to um recognize Salvador Flores, our new fire chief, and welcome him. This is gonna be his first board meeting. Yesterday I gave him the agenda pack, and I said you have two items, you know, to present this morning. Uh Salvador, I don't know if you want to say a few words.
You have fifteen minutes.
Good, good morning, honorable board and great citizens of Kings County. Thank you for the opportunity you've given me and the best to me for the safety of the community. I'm super excited to be here. I hit the ground running yesterday. Um I, you know, it's been nothing but warm welcomes, and I look forward to it with y'all and continue to support this community. So thank you for the opportunity.
Welcome to Kings County.
Thank you.
Mister Chairman, I have several people who would like to speak during the study session on the roads. I just wanted to verify that you would allow them to speak during that time as opposed to during unscheduled this time.
Not a problem.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody online that would like to say anything? No hands raised?
No.
Do we have anybody on that would like to say anything? Nope. Hey, okay, move on now to approval of the minutes. Report out of closed session from regular meeting, March fifth, twenty twenty four.
There is nothing to report today.
Thank you. Item B, approval of the minutes from regular meeting, March fifth, twenty twenty four. Moved by Supervisor Nev, second by Supervisor Robinson. Madam Clerk, please call the role.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes. Okay, five in favor. Item has been approved. Move on now to consent counter. Uh, we have two items. Uh, we can put them at one time or pull them separately, whichever you guys desire.
Move to the consent counter as presented.
Moved by Supervisor Nev, second by Supervisor Robinson. Madam Clerk, please call the role.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Five in favor, we approve the consent counter as presented. At this time, we'll move on to regular calendar items, which is the county council, Diane Freeman, and the first item.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Chairman and members of the board. On December thirty first, twenty twenty three, Carlo Wilcox resigned his seat on the Tulare Lake Reclamation District number seven six one. Thereafter, on February thirteenth, twenty twenty four, the county received a request from the district to appoint a trustee to fill the vacancy. The district presented two nominees for the board's consideration, Sherid Craig and Riley Jones. Pursuant to government code one seven eight zero F, the board has authority to make the appointment, but is not required to make the appointment. Accordingly, the Board of Supervisors may at its discretion appoint Sherid Craig to fill the vacancy, appoint Riley Jones to fill the vacancy, appoint another qualified landowner from the community to fill the vacancy, order the district to call for an election, or take no action at all. And I'm here to answer any further questions.
Thank you. Uh, any comments from the board? Assistant Leader Valley.
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning. Mr. Chairman, the two items that I could support this morning would be item D and item E. Uh, just uh uh is the, yeah, lately the politics of water and everything that's been going on, and some of the things the county's been called to question on specifically uh uh last year, numerous round of appointments to our water boards and water committees, I would be supportive of uh either um uh my first support would be to uh order Tulare Lake Reclamation District seven six one to call for an election to fill the vacancy. That keeps it out of our hands and keeps us out of the politics of it. That would be, that would be uh uh what we like to support this morning, sir. I won't make a motion at this time to give everyone else an opportunity to talk.
Thank you. Any other comments? Advisor Robinson.
So my question is, what's the cost of an election? Because I'm under the assumption that the, the district has a hard time uh meeting that threshold.
There would be costs associated with election. I'm actually gonna defer to Lupe, who helps conduct elections, if you might have a reasonable estimate of what it might cost.
For spatial waters?
Yeah. Uh, it all depends on the number of voters we have registered in that area as well. So if you have a landowner um district, then those elections are held not by my office, but someone else, a contractor's out. Um, so I can't speak to that cost. If he's held by my office, again, it depends on the number of registered voters in that area. So it all depending, not knowing which, the number of voters in that area. Uh, the districts do have the right to appoint uh sales. Um, so if they want to go to election, they would have to contact my office and we can move forward, but they do have the right to appoint. We do have experience, a lot of the districts, not just water districts, irrigations districts, foster districts, they suffer from finding folks that are willing to serve on the boards as well. So most of the time they do appointments because there's no one on the public who's willing to stand up and take part in the board. So that could be another instance of why they're doing an appointment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A follow-up question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Sevilla, uh, one, if, if they, if the water district has the opportunity to do the appointment, why would they put it on the Board of Supervisors?
It's the Board of Supervisors' direction, it's for them to approve the appointment. So if the water district, for example, you guys can point, um, but the ultimate say, the ultimate approval is from the Board of Supervisors.
Absolutely.
Supervisor Valley.
Involvement in the district, yes, ma'am.
I think I can add some additional insight to that for you. Um, the, this is an appointment to fill a vacancy. Sometimes we get a request for an appointment in lieu of election, and our obligations are different when it's in lieu of election. Since this is to fill a vacancy, then for the first sixty days after the vacancy occurs, then that position can be filled by the district itself. Um, the district failed to, based upon a dispute on the board. Um, what they reported to us was they had two members voting for one candidate and two members voting for another candidate. They couldn't come to a resolution, so they decided to ask the Board of Supervisors to appoint somebody uh to fill the vacancy. Um, after that first sixty days that the district has to make an appointment, the county has an additional thirty days to make that appointment. We are in that thirty day window, so the county has authority to act, um, and that's kind of how we get where we are today.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll close with this. Um, um, going, going to election, uh, then knowing that much, that a two-two split with a vacant, so no uh five members on that board, um, and that board wanting either uh Mr. Craig or Mr. Jones. I mean, where I sit, I just look at it, I don't know Mr. Craig, I know Mr. Jones, he's a hell of a guy. I love Mr. Jones, so why wouldn't I vote for Mr. Jones? That being said, uh, to take that out of the equation, I would be more comfortable with uh the landowners going to the election. I'll leave it for Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Any other comments? Any direction?
Um, I'd, I'd move to appoint Riley Jones.
Motion to appoint Riley Jones.
Second down.
Uh, motion by Supervisor Nev to appoint Riley Jones, second by Supervisor Fagundes. Uh, any further discussion? Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the role.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Sure.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes. Okay, uh, four in favor of appointment to Riley Jones and one abstention. Thank you. Move on now to item uh, next item, which is still county council. Nope, election, Lupe Villa, back.
Perspective of the cost of an election. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Lupe Villa with the Elections Office. On December thirty first, uh, former representative for, former representative Kevin McCarthy resigned from office, who's representing the Congressional District twenty. Um, that created vacancy on January eighth, Governor Newsom, by way of proclamation, ordered the counties of Kern, Kings, Tulare, Fresno to conduct a special election on schedule for May twenty first. What happens with the general election scheduled for May, May twenty first, we go back nine Tuesdays from that general election, which happens to be March nineteenth, and we're supposed to be having a, not supposed to, we will be holding a special election, March nineteenth, to fill that vacancy. The cost of the election is burning that comes on the counties, so all four counties represented by Congressional District twenty are responsible to pay for the cost of this election. I submitted a request to Advent back in January to request hundred and ten thousand dollars to conduct this election. Uh, the elections then have covered the area of Lemoore, northeast west Hamford, and it's about thirty thousand five hundred registered voters that would be impacted by this election. As we speak today, we do have ballots that went out already, some folks that reside in those districts received two ballots, a blue ballot, meaning for the presidential election, a yellow ballots with special election that we're holding, uh, again, next Tuesday, March nineteenth. It's basically a hundred and ten thousand dollars who covered May nineteenth election. If not one candidate takes fifty percent plus one come March nineteenth, then we're gonna have a general election for the special on May twenty first, which will all come back to the board and request additional funding to conduct that election. We're hoping, and I'm hopeful, that one candidate takes fifty percent plus one to avoid that general election, May twenty first. Again, that's burning that comes on the county taxpayers' money that we'll be using to fund this election. Uh, and I'm here today to respectfully ask that you approve the adopt change of hundred and ten thousand dollars from the general fund to my department to be able to conduct that election. It's a requirement for baseball. I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Lupe?
Questions, Mr. Chairman?
Leader Valley.
Uh, morning, Mr. Sevilla, again.
Morning.
Uh, so Sevilla, uh, one, um, I get it, this, this is something that you can see coming, so when I sat here for the budget last summer, you know, you don't have a magic ball where you can see the future. Uh, so the amount, in my opinion, it is what it is. I'm happy to support it. Um, and for anyone who thinks that it's not fair that the county has to pay this money, the double whammy is, it's not fair, Mr. Chair, in my opinion, that um all of Kings County taxpayers have to pay to fund this, meaning this congressional district doesn't cover my district, doesn't cover uh the large part of Kings County, but we all have to pay to fund this. So, well, with that, Mr. Chairman, I, I would make the motion to be supportive of approving this budget item and the total amount requested by Mr. Sevilla.
Yeah, a motion to, motion to support, uh, any more comments? I have a second.
Go ahead, second.
Second by Supervisor Nev. Madam Clerk, please call the role.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes. Okay, five in favor, Lupe, don't mess it up.
Yeah, hopefully we won't come back May twenty first or not.
I don't know why you can't keep these guys in office till the full term, so we.
Yeah, well, I got reservations in that, thank you.
We went back there and checked, and that door is closed, there's no one home, we're not even being represented, so.
Hey, can we just make an appointment for Super Ben this morning to save the cost of the election?
Oh, I'm sure that people want to fight over that. Okay, we'll move on now to Fire Department. Abraham, good morning, Abraham.
Good morning, Chairman.
You getting along with your new boss?
Um, I'll, I'll save my comments off. You're doing good. I got a new shirt, so I mean, first impressions.
He's already bribing you?
Yeah. Good morning, Chairman, Supervisors. Abraham Valencia, Office of Emergency Services, a division of the Kings County Fire Department. Um, I'm here today to present two items for recommendation for your approval. As you know, the Office of Emergency Services administers certain public safety grants that benefit uh our county, our operational area, the cities. Uh, today I have two items, um, and this is a grant that's offered by the California Office of Emergency Services. We administer it, and it's to assist local uh first response agencies to purchase the needed equipment, training and services that would be required to respond to a terrorist or an unusual event or activity. Um, the first item that I'm recommending your approval is with the City of Hamford's Fire Department. It's for unmanned aircrafts and training. Uh, these unmanned aircrafts are going to have thermal imaging capabilities, and the, the performance period is September twenty second, all the way to May thirty first, twenty twenty five, but no purchases have been made. That's just the way the grants work, they have a large performance period. So that's my first recommendation to approve that.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
So move it, Chair.
Moved by Supervisor Nev, second by Supervisor Fagundes, and are you the one that's gonna operate the unmanned aircraft?
Um.
He does a very good job.
They can't afford me, no.
Yeah.
No, they're, they're gonna receive, they, these are special, they're not.
One person, probably?
Yes, and then these are, they have thermal imaging capabilities. That's, that's way more than Tulare Lake pretty videos.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please fill the role.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley. Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson. Richard Fagundes.
Yes. Okay, looking forward to five in favor, so.
Thank you.
Let it all work out.
Thank you. And the second item is approving uh the agreement with the City of Hamford's Police Department. They're going to purchase some portable radios. Uh, the radios that they currently have are outdated. Uh, and so this is gonna allow them for communications and, and those such events. And again, the, the period is retroactive, September twenty second through May thirty first, twenty twenty five, although no purchases have been made as of yet, until this approval.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? So move. Moved by Supervisor Fagundes, second by Supervisor Robinson. Madam Clerk, please call the role.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Right.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Five in favor.
Thank you.
You got work to do now. Okay, move on now to the Public Health Department, and we have Marado, good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Mister Chairman and Supervisors. Eduardo Legaspi from Public Health. I'm here today to present an item requesting that your board adopt the resolution proclaiming the month of March twenty twenty four as American Red Cross Month. As we celebrate Women's History Month, it is appropriate that we acknowledge Clarissa Harlow Barton, known as Claire Barton, as one of the most honored women in American history. As a nurse, Claire Barton risked her life to bring supplies and support to soldiers in the field during the Civil War, and subsequently founded the American Red Cross in eighteen eighty one. Today, volunteers constitute about ninety percent of the Red Cross's workforce, making it possible to respond to an average of sixty-five thousand disasters every year, most of them home and apartment fires. This is equivalent to responding to an emergency every eight minutes. It provides classes in first aid, CPR, and lifeguarding amongst others. Additionally, it provides in-person support for troops on all military installations in the U.S. and on more than thirty-five overseas installations, including the Far East, Middle East, and Europe. Each year, the Red Cross provides nearly five hundred and fifty thousand services to service members, veterans and their families by leveraging a worldwide network of volunteers. Locally, the Central California region serves over four point two million residents throughout the eleven counties of Fresno, Enio, Kern, Kings, Madera, Mariposa, Mono, San Luis Obispo, Santa Barbara, Tulare, and Ventura. Over the past five years, the region has responded to two thousand five hundred and ninety-eight disaster home fires cases, providing over two point five million dollars in financial assistance. In Kings County alone, they have responded to eighty-one disaster home fire cases and managed one thousand and thirty-six service, services to armed forces cases, providing two thousand and three hundred and thirty-three individual services to, um, over that same period. With us today is Lori Wilson, the Executive Director of the Central California Region. We would like to say a few words.
Morning, Lori. How are you doing today?
Good morning. It's good to see you guys in person. I wasn't able to be here last year because, well, we were dealing with some floods, as you all remember. Um, so thank you for this opportunity um to recognize not myself, um, but our volunteers, because this is all done by volunteers. Uh, one of the fundamental principles is volunteerism, so ninety percent of the work, so all of those numbers that you hear, most of that is volunteer work being done. People that come from all over the country to support us when we need it, like we did last year with the flooding, or we send them across the country as well, supporting other disasters. Um, so rec, this kind of recognition is not about me, I just get to be the face, and it's about the, it's really truly is about the volunteers, so thank you for that.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Lori. Any more?
Therefore, the Department's request that your board approve a resolution proclaiming the month of March twenty four as American Red Cross Month.
Thank you. So move it, Chair. Moved by Supervisor Nev, second by Supervisor Fagundes. Madam Clerk, please call the role.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Alright.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes. Okay, thank you very much. It is now Red Cross Month and Women in History Month. Sure?
Stand, this is Zoe.
You want to stand up here with us?
Please.
Ruin your reputation.
Have a very strict communication standard.
Oh.
Alright, one, two, three, one, two, three, I guess, come on.
Thank you. You gonna ban it at two?
So, gotta do some filter.
Okay, at this time, we will move on to item E, Administration. Curia Martinez, we have Rural County Representative here, Craig Ferguson.
Thank you, Supervisor. So the Rural County Representative of California, R C R C, is committed to advocating for a shared and distinctive interest of its members. It offers legislative and regulatory representation at both state and federal levels, along with responsible services to enhance the safeguarding quality of life in rural California counties. R C R C is interested in presenting a strategic plan and activities of affiliated entities to, to our board this morning. On November eighth, twenty twenty two, the Kings County Board of Supervisors adopted a resolution supporting Kings County's membership in R C R C. Subsequently, on February twenty eighth of twenty twenty three, the board adopted resolutions to join affiliated entities of R C R C, which was the Golden State Connect Authority, Environmental Joint Powers Authority, the Golden State Finance Authority. And today I have Craig Ferguson, uh, the Senior Vice President of R C R C, who will be giving a short presentation. Thank you.
You gonna talk about how great the Kings County rep is?
Yes, I am.
Greatness inside.
Uh, I appreciate the uh time, good to see you, Supervisor Verboon, and you're gonna be heading back with me today, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Um, so what we do is we go to our member counties, uh, we split it up between four of us, the CEO, Pat, Barbara, Mary and myself. And so uh today's your lucky day, you got me and I've got you. And this is a kind of a high level strategic plan of R C R C and uh the affiliate entities and what they do. So I'm not gonna go deep into the weeds, but you guys did become a member of R C R C, as I said, two, two years ago, and then the affiliate entities about a year ago. And uh we are happy to, to have you on board. Um, R C R C has become quite popular in the more recent years, and um, you know, we, we're trying very hard to keep it rural, but we've got a lot of counties that are not, as rural, trying to join the membership now. So uh, it's uh different than even ten years ago where it was like pulling storage, trying to get members to join us, so it's a different game now. So on the uh, who's doing the slides?
Uh, Christine is. So I was like, if you just tell her the next slide, she'll.
Okay, next slide. Alright, so this just gives a high level of um, of R C R C and strategic, strategic plan, uh, the equitable access, we're focusing on broadband, housing, health services, uh impactful advocacy. This is where um, R C R C is really important to the member counties, because R C R C advocates on behalf of member counties as a whole. We've got forty member counties that make up R C R C, Kings County being one of them, and they're focused on state and federal advocacy. We've got lobbyists and advocates back in the office that are focused on rural issues. Um, as Supervisor Verboon knows, he's, he comes to our board meetings, we've got one tomorrow, and um he gets to uh enjoy the benefits of what the G A staff is providing for the member counties. Innovative approaches, regulatory engagement, uh, folks on healthy communities, one of them being forest resiliency and wildfire, I'll touch on that in one of the affiliate entities. Uh, water resiliency and infrastructure and economic development, and then more internally, operational excellence, human resources, uh, corporate administration, fiscal health, uh, technology, communication, member services. Next slide, please. So here gives a uh picture of the, of R C R C as the umbrella entity and then the affiliate entities. Um, we've got government affairs, economic development, business development, administration and finance. If you look on the bottom there, these are the affiliates of uh, R C R C, you've got Golden State Finance Authority, the National Home Buyers Fund, you've got the uh E S J P A, which is the Environmental Services Joint Powers Authority, you've got Rural Alliance, Inc., which is actually just last month changed its name to Rural Advancement Institute. Now I'll touch on that a little bit of what we're doing with this, but was dormant for years, is now making a comeback. Golden State Natural Resources and Golden State Connect Authority. Uh, next slide, please. So going back to R C R C, state policy areas, forest, healthcare, wildfire, care court, uh, water, broadband, housing, energy. It goes on, federal policies, kind of similar on the federal side, uh, big, big folks on forest, uh, health, um, water drought, et cetera. Um, a lot of focus, there's ad hoc committees made up of certain board members, the Williamson Act Ad Hoc Committee, the Road Infrastructure Ad Hoc Committee. Um, I won't go into the details, this is, it's up there for you. Um, next slide, please. So the two uh housing entities, Golden State Finance Authority and National Home Buyers Fund. Um, R C R C was uh incorporated in seventy-two, ninety-three, uh, they uh brought Golden State Finance Authority, which used to be called Calor, Ca- California Rural Home Mortgage Finance Authority, but then it, it spread statewide and uh it's not just rural, we made up the same forty members, the same forty members vote, are, are voting members on the board, and then we've got associate members that make up the rest of the counties of California. They don't have a voting line, but we do provide uh home buyer assistance uh across the state. And so uh, since ninety-three, uh, Golden State Finance Authority has managed was down payment assistance to low to moderate income home buyers. And um, you know, uh, the, the down payment is probably one of the most important things for the, for the first time, low to moderate income home buyer. And uh, the, the laws of getting a loan is, a bank can't provide that down payment. F H F, Danny May, Freddie Mac require a certain amount that you come out of pocket with. Um, banks can't do it, realtors can't do it, but the family member can, but most people don't have family members with that kind of money. A government entity can, or a nonprofit, so that's the niche of Golden State Finance Authority, we provide that down payment assistance. And uh, over the years since ninety-three, we've helped eighty-six thousand five hundred families get into homes with either gift or second mortgages, down payment assistance. And um, over sixteen billion in mortgage financing and over six hundred and seventy-two million in down payment assistance, either in the form of a, a second loan, most of the time it's been in form of a non-repayable gift. Um, and then Golden State's also uh, uh, you know, spread outside, it just down payment assistance. We went into energy financing several years ago, we partnered with the California Energy Commission, started doing whole house retrofits, Bureau of Federal Grants. That money uh went through very quickly, so then we partnered with a, a private entity, entity, uh, doing a PACE program. Bureau of Federal Grant, that money went through very quickly. So, then we partnered with a private entity doing a PACE program. And we did over a billion in whole house energy retrofits for residential and commercial. The residential ended. California kind of took a bit of a beating with the legislative actions against PACE for residential, but commercial's still strong. So, we're still focusing on commercial PACE programs. And Golden State also has, for the counties, for its member counties, we offer a upfront funding. If you, if you're in need of a project to get done in your county, but you don't have the funds, but you've got a grant coming in, but they expect the project to be completed before the grant funds will come in. We have a program that we implemented several years ago where Golden State will provide the loan with the projects completed. The, we'll come back to Golden State, but it allows the counties to get their projects done. And that's been pretty popular. We've used less three million dollars, and that's unlocked thirty-eight million dollars of projects around the counties. And it's a revolving, you know, when the money comes back, it goes back into that fund. Real quick, on, still on the home buyer side, we've got a home buyer assistance program, which is specific for county employees. Our CEO, Patrick Blackhawk, came from Yolo County several years ago, and thought it'd be a great idea if we made a program specifically for county employees, for counties to retain the employees and offer a special program for homeownership. So, we've got a special program, which is just better rates and better kind of more money out of Golden State's pocket to help counties retain their employees or bring employees into their counties. And any info on that, by all means, we've got contacts at, back at the shop to do that. We do trainings, we do trainings with county employees, with staff, and just to get everyone up to speed. National Home Buyers Fund, just to touch on that real quick, does the same thing as Golden State Finance Authority, but it does it nationally. And so, National Home Buyers Fund has helped over forty-seven thousand families on a national level doing the same thing, down payment assistance, and has been around since about two thousand and two. And Golden State Connect Authority, this is the new JPA. This is focusing on broadband in rural California. And I think we realized very quickly when COVID hit that the fifth-largest or fourth-largest economy in the world has the worst internet in its rural areas. And we've been doing a lot of work, working with the CPUC to get funding to allow us to go and get private funding. The idea is to give us a reserve of funds that we don't want to touch and probably won't touch, but use that as a reserve and then go sell debt to build, own, and operate the infrastructure for broadband in rural California. And we made a lot of headway, and we're at the application stage right now. Language was even changed based on what our advocacy staff wrote in order to allow municipalities to own and operate broadband infrastructure, and that's well on its way. And we have partnered with a company out of Utah, another government entity out of Utah called Utopia Fiber. And they are the largest municipality-owned owner of broadband infrastructure in the country. And they've, they've got over fifty thousand subscribers in the last five years. And what they do is an open access. So, they, they provide the broadband, they provide the fiber, they don't provide the service. If you're an internet provider, you can jump in. You can be AT&amp;T, you can be Comcast, you can be Verizon, you can be Monkey Brains. You can jump in and offer the service. And as a consumer, you're not stuck with one. I'm in Sacramento. I've got one choice is Comcast. That's all I got. This provides open access. If you don't like Comcast, you can go to AT&amp;T. If you don't like AT&amp;T, you go to Verizon. It's just, it's an open access, and it's become very, very popular. We're gonna be doing that. We're gonna be doing open access in rural California. And we're getting very, very close to implementing. We're working with several partners. Utopia's gonna, we don't know anything about actually operating internet, but Utopia does, and they're gonna do it on our behalf. So, we're pretty much partnering with this institute. We've been doing it for actually over ten years. And we're just gonna be the issue of the debt and the name behind it. And we're gonna, we're gonna outsource to Utopia to do pretty much everything. So, that's pretty exciting stuff happening there. There's another affiliate entity, Golden State Natural Resources. This is the Forest Resiliency Entity, and this was created several years ago. And this was created in order to give us access to get into the forest, remove all the dead biomass, not biomass, but the dead fuel, and pretty much turn that into biomass and pellets and export the pellets to Europe and Asia. And that's kind of the initial idea. We've made a lot of headway. Several years ago, we got into a twenty-year agreement with the U.S. Forest Service to allow us to enter the forest. And it's U.S. Forest, not a state forest. But we've bought two facilities, one in, when I say facilities, we've bought two pieces of land, one in Topeka County and one up in Larson County. And that, the idea there is to build a facility. Obviously, we're gonna obtain financing, and that's gonna be bonds and equity. And that's where we're working with several entities to build that. In the interim, we're also looking with, we're working with what we call takeout and investment providers. And a couple of weeks back, we actually entered into a memory, an agreement of understanding with the largest pellet stakeholder in the world, it's called Drax. And so, it's, it's a big move, and we've pretty much raised a lot of eyebrows, saying this is real. Been kind of slow for a few years, but suddenly we've partnered with the largest in the world, based out of the UK. And anyway, the idea's there. It's, we're in an environmental review right now, and that could, that's pretty rough, as I'm sure you'll know when it comes to California environmental reviews, but we're in it, and we're fighting it, and it's gonna go to litigation. And, you know, we're gonna get through it. And once we're through that, you know, no stopping. Next slide, please. And so, this is the Environmental Services Joint Powers Authority, which I believe has kind of joined just recently, maybe in the last year. And this is, this has been around for, also since ninety-three, but on a much smaller scale, it's starting to grow. The membership of the existing RCRC counties is definitely starting to join this entity. It really focuses on, you know, regulatory advocacy, technical assistance, and it's twenty-seven counties right now. And we'd like to see that get up to be the same forty counties that make up RCRC. Suppose local public education campaigns, ministers grants for recycling and hazardous waste. And, and so, next slide, please. Get into the agenda. Hang with me. And so, this is the Rural Alliance, Inc., which has now changed its name to Rural Advancement Institute. And the idea behind this, this was dormant for a while. We brought it back. And the idea behind this is to create educational opportunities for, I guess, non-rural policymakers. Bring them to rural California, show them what rural California is about, and educate them on the needs of rural California. National Home Buyers Fund put fifty thousand dollars into this, and then PG&E actually donated fifty thousand dollars to get this started and allow for the first few educational tours and what have you. So, the next step here is for us to go out to some private entities. It could be a Citibank, it could be Wells Fargo, it could even be Freddie Mac, whatever. Throw some money at this and help your efforts to, help our efforts in rural areas of California, because those are the ones that are left behind, from health to housing to internet to, you know, everything else. And anyway, thank you for your time, and that brings me to the end of the RCRC, which Kings County is one of the members, and we appreciate it.
Thank you very much. You guys have any questions for Craig? I have a couple of comments. So, you know, we belong to CSAC, which is California State Associate County. We belong to NACO, which is National Associate County. So, every time we go to these events and meetings, our voice is heard. But at CSAC, you know, we have urban, suburban, rural. And it seems like our votes, you know, we got four percent of the votes in California, so we don't have a big voice in CSAC, but it's good to belong to them, to understand what's happening. NACO, we're very small in the department, but we also, we contribute to all kinds of stuff when it comes to water, water to the U.S. And I'll see Vladimir Peterson worked on it for like four days to get, you know, get some language change and that, so we can continue farming here. But when it comes to RCRC, we're on the same page, and there's no argument in the room. And we have a bigger voice when it comes to fighting for our rights in rural California. So, I want to thank Craig for coming down today and making a presentation. We have had a Zoom call or a workshop for the county employees to get the home buyer assistance. So, that's really good. So, we'll stay, they stay on the lookout and protect the right to the county residents here in King County, and I want to thank you for coming down.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
See you tomorrow or tonight. Okay, do we have to make a motion on this or accept it or anything?
Just to receive the presentation.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, we're gonna go to study session, and it's gonna be Kiriak and Human Services Agency. Morning, Wendy.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the Board. Wendy Osikoff, Director of Human Services. I'm here today to give an update on our FEMA reimbursement as it relates to non-congregate shelter. We called that Project Room Key during the COVID-nineteen pandemic. So, just to take us back a little bit, in March, March thirteenth of twenty twenty, the President declared a national emergency concerning COVID-nineteen pandemic with an effective date of March first. Following that, President's Declaration, our Governor issued an executive order requiring all Californians to stay at home or shelter in place. On March twenty-seventh, FEMA informed the region that they would be reimbursing the cost of non-congregate shelter for homeless individuals in the following circumstances. There's really three categories. One is individuals that tested positive, that didn't require hospitalization, but still needed to isolate. Individuals that were exposed to COVID-nineteen that also needed to isolate. And then the third category, and really the subject of today's presentation, were individuals who were asymptomatic, but at high risk for COVID-nineteen. So, if you recall, CDC had outlined some of those, some of those high-risk factors. If you were over sixty-five, if you had a heart condition, lung disease, or some kind of breathing, breathing, breathing conditions, you were considered at high risk. And, you know, and the risk at that time was higher likelihood of death. So, as a result, Kings County began operations. Most counties were required to have some sort of not, some form of non-congregate shelter during the disaster. Most shelter operations, when you think about, you know, in my role in this, I'm not standing here as the Human Services Director. I'm really standing as the person responsible for mask care and shelter during a disaster. So, when that occurs, typically we're sheltering in a gymnasium, and we've got cots. But during COVID, that was the antithesis of what we needed, and we needed that isolation. So, the non-congregate shelter was approved, which is not typically approved by FEMA. So, we began our non-congregate shelter operations in April of twenty twenty at two sites, Holiday Lodge and Stardust Motel. On December eighteenth, we received a memo from Governor Newsom indicating that FEMA would no longer require our approval request every thirty days. We were, the state was having to get approval for non-congregate shelter in thirty-day increments. And at that point, we got a blanket approval for non-congregate shelter, as long as the pandemic, as long as the disaster was declared. And that FEMA would authorize reimbursement throughout the remainder of the pandemic. FEMA reimbursement was at a hundred percent from March of twenty twenty through July of twenty twenty-two. After that, the FEMA reimbursement was reduced to ninety percent of the allowable cost, putting ten percent on the county, county share. Our FEMA claiming in Kings County stopped effective September thirtieth of twenty twenty-two. From October first, twenty twenty-two, through the close of the project in July thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, we used funds from the state of California, called CDS, ask PRK funds, and they were allocated to counties to transition away from the Project Room Key project and to aid in transitioning people out of those programs. And the total PRK expenses that were claimed to FEMA, so I'm excluding the portion that was covered by the state, was eight million, thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Of that, Kings County has received three million, three hundred and eighty-nine thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars in reimbursement. That's essentially covering fiscal year nineteen-twenty expenses and the bulk of fiscal year twenty-twenty-one expenses. We did not receive that reimbursement until around June or July of twenty twenty-two. It was widely known that it can take several years to get FEMA reimbursement, and so we were on that kind of two-year schedule, and we did get those first two years reimbursed. FEMA still owes Kings County approx, well, not approximately, what FEMA still owes us is four million, seven hundred and seven thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars. During the summer of twenty twenty-three, it became evident that there was an issue with our FEMA reimbursement. I wasn't worried from, you know, June twenty-two to about June twenty-three. We knew that there was a couple-year delay. But around that time, just our claim was not moving. It was not progressing to the system. We could not get any answers. They didn't have questions for us. We submitted everything we needed to submit, but there was not any movement or progress being made. I reached out to the Department of Social Services, CAL OES, trying to see if we could get clarity on what the holdup was. They were not able to provide any answers. FEMA just kept simply saying, all non-congregate share, non-congregate shelter claims are on indefinite. So, that, I reached out to our CAO, and we engaged Paragon, our lobbyists, to see if they could get some more information for us, see what the holdup was, see what can be done to advocate to get our claims moving. They were able to affirm that we are not the only county, that were numerous counties that were impacted throughout the state of California. And, but even they couldn't get a definitive answer on what the holdup was or when it was gonna break free. However, October sixteenth of twenty twenty-three, FEMA issued, and I'm gonna air quote this, a clarification letter. Because I don't think they clarified. I think this is new, new information. But they issued a clarification letter that retroactively changed their previous guidance, limiting PRK stays to twenty days for the high-risk homeless individuals. And they made that effective June eleventh of twenty twenty-one. Despite FEMA's assertion that they are only clarifying existing guidance, this letter is in fact, did in fact substantially change prior rules. As a result, the cost for individuals who had stays over twenty days will be denied. This is impacting numerous counties throughout the state and is estimated to total well over three hundred million in disallowed costs statewide. We are estimating that this new rule will result in disallowances for our county between two and three million dollars of the four point seven million dollars that we are owed. This is, this, if it is, if it is disallowed, this would be a direct impact to general fund. These are not HSA program expenses. These are disaster expenses that would not be reimbursed by FEMA and are direct hit to the county fund. So, there's a couple of strategies I'm gonna talk about. The current strategy, and I'm really hoping it to, for it to be our most successful, is to advocate for FEMA to rescind their new guidance, as it was implemented retroactively, and there were not any prior limits outlined in the FEMA guidance that had been provided for these projects. In addition, this course change is actually a violation of FEMA's own policy, which requires a thirty-day advance notice for any rule changes, for reimbursement. Kings County's been coordinated, coordinating with other impacted jurisdictions and CAL OES on the impact of this decision in the months since this letter was released. And so, I want to go over a few of the efforts that have occurred. On January thirty-first, CAL OES submitted a formal request to FEMA to rescind their decision. Paragon, CAO Martinez, and Supervisor Verboen elevated this issue during the Legislative National Association of Counties delegation visit with all representatives of Kings County in Washington, D.C. On February twentieth, United States Senators Alex Padilla and Lofanza Butler issued a letter to President Biden, expressing concern and requesting that the policy change be rescinded. On February twenty-second, Governor Newsom met with White House officials and insisted that FEMA honor its commitment to fully reimburse California's local governments. And even just this morning, United States Representative Garcia took lead on a delegation letter. Representative Valadeo and thirty-five other co-signers from the California delegation signed onto this letter, and that, at the time, we had a draft. We now have a final letter that was issued just this morning. And Paragon continues to monitor and lobby and advocate on this issue on our behalf. I do want to talk about the appeal process and sort of our backup strategy. But before I do that, I just want to give, see if Paragon has anything to add. Any other efforts that I haven't mentioned or anything you're hearing on this effort, if you could update the Board, please?
Thank you, Wendy. Joe, are you on?
Morning. Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir. Sound great.
Excellent, excellent. Well, thank you to Wendy for that presentation update. You are a great partner. You made our job very easy. You described to a T exactly the efforts that have been happening out here. So, yeah, I'll just So yeah, I'll just sort of reemphasize, and I see Tom, Tom is on from our team, by the way, as is Hassan. This has been a, again, I'll emphasize a team effort. Wendy, Kiria, the staff, obviously Mr. Chairman, and Supervisor Robinson coming out to DC to talk about this issue. It's been a team effort in trying to, you know, overturn this pending guidance from FEMA. Again, just reemphasize that, yes, the congressional delegation has been, strongly has Kings County's back on this. Congressman Valadeo is directly involved, as Wendy indicated. He did sign that multiple member, 36-member delegation letter that went to the FEMA Administrator yesterday, which was, which was released today. The Senator sent an earlier letter to the President. So the political buttons are being pushed on this. We will keep you very closely apprised of any developments, but I think, I think we're in a good position in terms of all the support from the key delegation members on this. So it's, it's great when you can get that many members of the California delegation on the same page, pushing in the same direction on this particular issue. So we're pleased with that teamwork. We'll keep you apprised. Always difficult to, to kind of predict when we might have final resolution to this particular issue, but again, we'll, we'll let folks know. Tom, Hassan, if you have anything to add, that'd be great. Otherwise, if not, we're, we're happy to take questions as well.
Nothing more from me.
Thank you. Supervisor Valley, you got a question?
Oh, yes, real quick, Mr. Chairman, for Paragon. Hey, good morning, sir. So the, so the letter with 35 delegates, those, those are all only California elected officials?
That's correct Supervisor. Those are California elected officials. This, this issue with Project Room Key and the FEMA retroactive policy change does appear limited to Region 9 and specifically the State of California, given the implementation of Project Room Key, thus the, the California angle to this particular issue.
Oh, I thought, understood it to be, since it's federal and, and obviously COVID impacted the world, understood this to be a national issue, that this FEMA letter affects every state in our country.
So yeah, our, yeah, thank you for that inquiry. Yeah, our, our understanding is that again, you know, this was a region, certainly localized to Region 9, which there are other states within Region 9, but is specific to the Project Room Key initiative that was launched by the state and implemented by California jurisdictions, mostly counties and, and some cities. Tom, Hassan, I'm not aware of this affecting other, other states.
No, Joe, that's, that's my understanding as well.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, and we've, this is Hassan, we've engaged with NACO as well, that they haven't heard from any other states. California and we see it, they were sort of ahead of the, the game. They sought this blanket approval, and that's why so many jurisdictions within California took advantage of this program. So, but yeah, from our understanding yet, it is limited just to California.
The last question was, with Paragon, with you guys at the table and embedded in DC, is it, is it a, is there political gamesmanship in this? I mean, Congressman Valadeo, he's the only Republican who signed this. 34 Democratic members of Congress signed the letter with only Congressman Valadeo being the lone Republican. Were there other Republicans that were asked, or they're not at the table?
I believe there was one other, I'll check this Supervisor and Tom Hassan, correct me, I, I think there may have been one other Republican member that had signed this. So it's, we don't see this as, as a political issue at all. You know, all, all members of the delegation were asked to do this. Some Republicans, including Congressman Valadeo, have been doing their own outreach, by the way, on this, on this issue. You know, obviously, we have a Democratic administration in, in the Biden administration. We have, you know, the Governor going to him to work directly, Democrat to Democrat. You've got, again, the majority of, of Democrats within the congressional delegation writing, writing to the President and to FEMA on this. You know, I think through our direct involvement, again, along with the support of the supervisors going directly into Valadeo's office, make, urging them to, to sign on to this, again, mostly Democratic effort, I think, I think helped. And again, I think they're doing other, other activity on their own, but, but all members were asked to, to, to sign this letter. And I would say, if you look at jurisdictionally across California, the jurisdictions that were impacted are represented mostly by Democrats.
Okay, thank you. But, you know, it, it would be disappointing if it was seen along any kind of political line, because, you know, obviously, the counties that this affects, when it, when it just comes to the impacts, especially to our general funds, Chairman, even the slow level for us, it takes us out of the game to, to recover from the hit. So I would assume the board would ask that, that our fellow lobbyists go, you know, 100% on firepower, talking to both sides of the aisle and getting a lot of pressure there, because, yeah, fiscally, I don't, I, I wanna understand the politics on the fiscal side, especially with this being the, the largest world emergency that I believe FEMA has responded to in their history. And what, I don't remember anybody saying anything about, hey, only 20 days. And, and I believe I voted no on these programs during the pandemic anyways, but these were, this, this, to me, this comes across as new, just in, in a way to say, well, instead of cutting a bigger check, if, if we limit this to 20-day stays versus, I believe we have people staying there for months and, and being sheltered, which is what we thought the mission was there. I'm, it comes across as a way to just write lower amounts of reimbursement checks to the counties in the State of California. And thank you to our people in DC. Thank you, Paragon.
You're welcome. Thank you Supervisor.
Effort to mitigate their, their cost exposure. And, I mean, the, the biggest issue is that people's risk factors didn't go away. You know, you don't stop being 65, 20, 20 days later, you don't not have a heart condition on the 21st day. So those risk factors remained, which is why, why people weren't allowed to stay.
Yeah, we, we didn't really wanna do this in our county. Actually, we were threatened by the Governor's Office, with his staff saying, if you don't do it, you're gonna lose other funding. And that was, that's insulting now, because now they're not gonna reimburse us. Also, this was happening when we were in DC. I was texting Wendy here like, like midnight my time, she would give me all the information I can get to get to Paragon. They knew about it. We went right into LaFonsa Butler's office and Senator Padilla's office that next morning. Had to share with them, but you got 30 minutes to share your ideas, and it was new to them at the same time. So I'm glad to see we're gonna do a letter to get some support. And I, I don't know if, if Valadeo's the only Republican, I think that might have signed on this too, because it's his, it's his district as well. So, well, stay strong, I'm not gonna pay, pay it. I mean, it's FEMA's responsibility. They put us in this position. It's the Governor's Office that put us in this position, so we need some support, so.
Those ties must chair into the next study session we have, where, you know, we're dealing with FEMA funds on getting these roads closing, open, that need to get open.
We were there, one thing I told all, all the Senators and our Congressmen, on Monday morning, President Biden came in and spoke to us, and he bragged about doing this, and how he funded all these programs. And then that night, they're saying they're not gonna pay us. So there's a disconnect of truth in the White House.
What's the, what's the chain of command? And maybe it's a Paragon question. What's the chain of command? How's the FEMA director have so much power to override the President, override the Governors that they made these initial agreements with?
Yeah, thank you Supervisor. Yeah, you know, it's, it gets dicey. FEMA is an independent agency, but no, you know, politically, obviously, if, if the White House is directly involved in this and responsive to the delegation leaning, leaning on FEMA, you've, you've got to imagine that, you know, again, there will be intense pressure on them to, to reverse course on this, this particular decision.
Thank you. I think we're united. I think we can, we can get the message out. Supervisor Robinson?
Hi Joe, Supervisor Robinson, how are you? I just, is there precedence for this? Has FEMA done this before where they've retroactively changed things?
Absolutely. Great, great question. Yes, yes, FEMA does have a little bit of a history of making retroactive policy changes. Actually, going back to the, the late 90s, early 2000s, FEMA was doing some retroactive policy determinations, which were affecting public agencies in California on some flood control and, and related projects. There was an effort and actually passage of a bill, the Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000, because of these decisions, which basically said FEMA needs to provide 30-day notice before it makes any policy redeterminations that have a major financial impact on local jurisdictions. In fact, that was something that California's counties and Kings County worked on, again, going, going way back to the early, early 2000s, late 1990s. And in fact, you know, Wendy may have mentioned this in her comments, FEMA did not incidentally adhere to that policy of providing 30 days notice with regard to this policy change. So they did not follow their own law. So yeah, short answer is yes, they have done this before. But again, there's, there's rules and regs in place to deal with this now, which actually, quite frankly, helps our argument in terms of trying to overturn what they've done most recently here.
Thanks Joe.
Their comments and questions? I told them, it's like playing poker with a drunk friend, the rules change as they lose. So.
Let me just hear a few, like, so obviously, we're really hopeful that the advocacy to get FEMA to rescind the letter, that's Plan A, and you know, that will really resolve the issue. I do wanna share kind of a Plan B and Plan C, should that, should that not be successful? We are, so if our claims are denied, or they won't be fully denied, but if the portion of our claims are denied and about, about the $2 to, $2 to $3 million is denied, we will appeal, we will appeal that decision. There is a formal appeal process. The Director of Finance and I met with Whit O'Brien, who we have contracted to work with us on the 2023 flood disaster and our FEMA claiming. So they can give us some guidance and work with us on that appeal process. And if that appeal is not successful, there's also an arbitration process that we can go through. This will take time. It'll be, and I'm anticipating a couple of years to, to get through all the, the appeals and arbitration if needed. We will likely have to come back to the board to increase the contract and get approval to expand the scope of services with Whit O'Brien. But that is something that we've kind of got queued up so that we can pursue that path if it's needed. And really, I guess, the final, like, if all else fails, we were directed by the Governor to do this. This didn't feel like an optional program to anybody. And so, and I think that's why you see the state and the Governor advocating so hard on it. I think at the end, if all, all other avenues fail, whether it's through CSAC or, you know, whatever, whatever groups wanna come together, I think there needs to be pressure on the state to make the counties vote on this, because we were, we were following direct guidance. This wasn't something we just hooked up in Kings to do on a whim. It was, it was under direction, state direction. I do.
Mr. Chairman, on that note, for changes, I don't, I don't remember that being that way respectfully, because I believe some of the monies we got were because other counties were turning the money back and saying they were not gonna do that. So I don't feel that it was, that it was, this was a program forced on Kings County, just for the record, right? Some of the money we got.
I got, I got. I got text messages saying otherwise, from Maria Herrera, saying if we don't do it, we'll lose other funding.
There was guidance from the Governor. I think the scale of it and how big counties went, and there were certainly counties that opted not to even pursue FEMA. And from just talking to my colleagues, because of some of these issues with FEMA, they just felt like it wasn't worth the hassle. So some of those counties ate the cost. And so I think there's, there is a variation from county to county, but there was an expectation to provide non-congregation.
Then you mentioned an appeal process. Who do you appeal to?
So initially, you appeal to FEMA. So we can anticipate the decision, which is why it will most likely then go to an arbitration.
Yeah, that makes no sense, because you, you're asking them, please, right now, would you please give us money that we're owed? And they say no, then what, you appeal with pretty please?
Yes.
Expect they're gonna say yes? It's not gonna happen.
And so today, we are, it is just a study session to inform the board, however, we do have one action item, and we would like to authorize the Chairman to sign letters of thanks to Senators Padilla and Butler, Representative Valadeo, and I think Representative Garcia, and urging them to continue to advocate for, for the rescind, the, to rescind the, the new guidance from FEMA.
Thank you. Any question, comments, any direction?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the letter with the amendment that, why won't we just simply blast it out to all those members who wrote letters so we could keep, let them know that even in Kings County, they don't represent us, but we appreciate the advocacy, advocacy.
Okay. A motion by Supervisor Valley, second by Supervisor Robinson. I don't, please call the roll.
Joe Neves.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Okay, five in favor. Move on to the next item. We have another study session here today, and we have Mitchell. Morning Mitchell. These people are all here for you.
The hot seat. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Mitchell Cabrera, Chief Engineer with the Public Works Department here at the county, before your board this morning to present a update on the county roads flooded in the Tulare Lake Basin and give a general overview of the process staff has been working through. So on the next slide in this presentation, we'll see the overview of different staff and consultants that are gonna be speaking on the key topics. So Public Works Department will present some information on the background. Director of Finance Eric and our Consultant Whit O'Brien will present general information on FEMA and the process. And then finally, Kiria Martinez, our CAO, will give some information on the fiscal impact of the flood. So on the background information, the next slide. As we all know, February 2023 winter storms last year prompted the declaration of a disaster, CH23-3, due to the flooding. As a result of this flooding and the major rain events, approximately 60 miles of county roads were inundated or flooded. And as a result of that disaster that was declared, county staff is working through various agencies to try to go after or receive federal aid relief funding for the reconstruction and repair of those roads. There are two funding sources. The first one is FEMA, which we are, we are all well aware of. And the other one is the Federal Highway Administration or Caltrans. Now, the US Department of Transportation classifies the road segments throughout the state as local roads, major roads, minors, arterials, depending on the amount of traffic, the speed, and where they connect the community or the county through. So 33 of the 60 miles are going through FEMA. They're designated through the FEMA designation, while the remainder 27 have to go through the Federal Highway Administration or Caltrans for the funding. So throughout the presentation, you'll hear FEMA, but the FHWA or Caltrans has similar guidance and requirements for receiving of the fund or the aids. Apart from those 60 miles of county roads that were damaged or inundated, various bridges throughout the county also were damaged. The Houston Avenue Bridge is a complete, the structure itself has failed, has been closed by the county and also Caltrans has gone out and inspected and formally closed through one of the resolutions as a close, necessary to close a road. No permitted loads or any load allowed to go on that bridge. The county is working on that full replacement. We put out a request for proposal. We have an engineer who has submitted, and that agreement will be before your board shortly to start the design on the new structure that will replace that filled bridge. Other eight bridges throughout the county were affected with scour or the high water flows removed the sediment, sand, gravel at the abutments and piers. So that is also being worked at to receive funding to do some of that repair work on those structures. So on the next slide, we have more information on the background. As a result of the flooding, there were and there are currently road closures throughout the county, and we know it's an inconvenience and it affects the motor public, it affects everyone. But there are reasons why we have the road closures in place. The first obvious reason is for safety. Obviously, some of the roads received major damage that's visible. You can see it, you can feel it when you drive, and it's just not safe to allow traffic on there. Obviously, they're closed, but also there's non-visible damaged. A lot of the roads were submerged, ranging from three weeks to months, and some are still underway. So although you cannot see the damage, the subsurface or the structural integrity of that road segment has been compromised. And it's important to note, and you'll hear, you'll hear throughout the presentation about a submerged roads policy or inundated roads policy. FEMA has that. And that, in that policy, it dictates that if a county prematurely opens up a road segment to the motoring traffic and it receives damage, the county is no longer eligible to receive any funding for those repairs. They consider it negligence on the applicant or the county. So although it appears that a road is, is in good condition, we can drive it without letting the saturated soil dry, getting the necessary, necessary repairs done on that road, it is just not safe to go open up to the public. So that is the difference between visible and non-visible damage.
And Mitchell, just sorry to interrupt you, but we just had a study session just now that showed that even if they follow the rule, it may not get paid.
Yes. So it, it, there is that gamble, but allowing the county to get to the point of FEMA declaring, yes, you're gonna receive funds, no, you're not, removes that uncertainty. So if we get to the point where, where they declare that you're not getting funds, then it will be on the county's responsibility to figure out are we gonna fund the repairs or move forward. But until then. But until then, it's a risk. You have to kind of balance. So up next, I'm going to invite Patricio Viegas to continue talking about the background information.
And Mitchell, do we have anybody from FEMA here to support what we're doing, or we're on our own?
As of now, we're on, we're on our own right now. We have a consultant that's been hired to work with FEMA, and they'll be on later on in the presentation.
They're at, they're at a armed, or they're further than armed distance away from us. We don't have anybody we work with. We just follow the rules and guidelines and.
So we are working with FEMA. We were having weekly meetings with their program manager here in the area. But as you'll see later on in the presentation, there are some reasons why it appears we're moving forward at a slower pace than we would like to.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent. Good morning.
Morning. Patricio Viegas, engineer three with Public Works. So as part of the efforts responding to the flooded roads, Public Works Department retained a geotechnical engineer to take a look at some of the road sections that became accessible once waters receded. So they looked at dense sections of the flooded roads. And the purpose for for that investigation was to evaluate the road conditions, the subgrade conditions, to provide an opinion as to open the roads and then provide recommendations or repairs. And also, the findings that came out of that report were that there is a high water table that exists because of the flood, a temporary high water table because of the flood, and high moisture contents on the subgrade soils, which affect the road's ability to support loading due to the traffic. Go to the next slide. So this is some of the damage that happened on some of the roadways. As you can see, there's undermining on the roadway, which is the loss of soil support underneath the asphalt surface. So this condition is clearly unsafe to open the road to traffic. And then not only that, you can see how the shoulder got washed, got washed away, and then there is a need to further analyze the extent of the undermining to determine the full, the full damage. Go to the next. So as Mitchell mentioned, some of the roads were flooded for weeks, months, and this is the condition at Fourth Avenue. This, there's a section that's still underwater, and so it is expected that the subgrade will be compromised because of that. Next slide. These are other types of damage, visible damage that you can clearly see due to the wave action that occurred because of the flood. Some of the asphalt surfaced, aggregate based in subgrade soils got got washed off, and it's, the roads are not good to drive. Other damage also consisted of the loss of the shoulder and the breeze on the roadway. Next slide. Other type of damage consisted of the intensified cracking, also loss, loss of shoulder support, sediment on the roadway. These are all damages that occurred due to the flood. And like I said, this, this would not be a, a good road to drive on as well.
Looks like Tulare County right there.
No, this is, this is, yeah. Next slide. So this is the condition. This is Racine Avenue. So looking at the road section, the road appears dry. However, in the geotech, the geotech report supports this. There's a high moisture content on the subgrade soils. So a high moisture content on the subgrade soils, as soon as you put traffic on it, there's a potential that it's going to accelerate the damage that is going to occur on these roadways. Although the road looks, looks good to drive on, the, the moisture condition exists underneath. And you also have other damages like sediment on the roadway, some, most of the shoulders. And so all of these conditions need to be corrected before we can safely open the roads. And now I'll pass it on to Eric to continue the presentation.
All right. Eric Irina, Director of Finance and Cost Recovery Manager for the county. I'm here to just briefly give you guys an update. We've been meeting with FEMA weekly, two hours at a time. We're also meeting with Whit O'Brien, which is who we're going to bring up next. But even with these weekly meetings, things are still moving slowly, and it's trying to figure out, you know, and then why in the mess that FEMA kind of created before we got Whit O'Brien on. You know, FEMA swaps out, and when you can probably speak to this, they swap out their program manager or their project managers, it seems like every other, every few months. So, you know, Whit O'Brien has come on, I think they started with us in October. Now, they're going to speak a little bit more as to give you guys a brief, like, overview of the whole FEMA process and give you a snapshot of where we're at today. But it's been, they've been with us for probably like five months now, and, you know, we're finally starting to see this, these things go. But now we're running into this roadblock of the flooded and inundated roads. So I'd like to bring up Jake Joseph with Whit O'Brien.
Morning, Mr. Joseph.
Morning.
How you doing?
Good morning, public. Good morning, council. As Eric said, we came on about five months ago to help the county out. We're also working with Tulare County as well since about March of last year, or, yeah, March of last year in regards to the storms. So we just kind of wanted to give you guys a brief overview of the FEMA process and some roadblocks we're seeing with FEMA and how we're trying to move forward and hopefully capture as much of this funding as possible. Really trying to put the pressure on FEMA. Got a few different strategies to go about doing that, so if we could go next slide. So this, we could probably go one more slide up. So this is kind of an overview of the 4699 projects in the FEMA system. FEMA's numbers aren't always super up to date in their system, so I'm going to revert back to our numbers we have in terms of, you know, submerged roads, projects going into FEMA, it's about $25 million, give or take. So basically, we're currently working on moving all those projects through the system. They're kind of at the beginning stages, like Eric said earlier, due to a lot of kind of FEMA's affected setbacks on those projects that were luckily unknotted right now. We could go next slide on this one, then. So this is kind of just an overview of the grant funding process with FEMA. Basically, FEMA comes out, or we basically do what are called PDAs, where you go out to figure out the set million dollar cap to get over, to basically get a FEMA declared disaster. After that process, you move into making temporary repairs to what we call emergency repairs, which are, you know, category B work, category A work, debris work, emergency protective measures, et cetera. Then it goes into detailed site inspections with FEMA. This is one of the roadblocks we've hit recently with them, or a few months ago before we came on. And that's when we start really kind of trying to untie these knots. FEMA basically has a process where they come out, send a few guys that are usually not the greatest in the world at their jobs, and they perform site inspections with the county. They basically performed insufficient site inspections, missed a lot of information, and kind of set the county back a few months on that process by doing that. These are one of the other options that I kind of want to, you know. And in coordination with Tulare County as well, try to push Congress on, you know, making as much noise as possible on this topic. It's a growing issue, and, you know, that, that definitely set the county back a little bit. So we redid a lot of the site inspections, went out there with them, pretty much just double-checked all of their work and performed our own site inspections as well. They still actually missed information on those, unsurprisingly. Luckily, we did the work for them as well, so I think we got those covered. So we're now moving the roads along in the system. We've got a couple different strategies again to kind of go about that between going to CalOES for funding as well as FEMA. And basically, as Mitchell said, there is a submerged roads policy, which actually, we can go to the next slide. Yeah. As Mitchell spoke about the submerged roads policy, basically, of the past few hurricanes in the nation, the past few years, the public basically put pressure on FEMA to come out with a submerged roads policy. FEMA fashion, they basically came out and created a policy that says, summarily, they don't pay for submerged roads. So their idea of submerged road damage is visible damage to a road. Roads are submerged for this long. As we all know, they stay very saturated, you know, structurally compromised, the entire roadways. And that is not visual damage. So that's kind of where we get to going between CalOES funding, which we're in contact with CalOES leadership right now, discussing funding options with them for road sections that are not visibly damaged. So roadway cracking, stuff like that, they do see that as damage. So FEMA, we are going to be pushing on FEMA to pay for that. And the roads that don't have visible damage but are obviously structurally compromised, be going to CalOES to try to secure funding that way. Or have FEMA deny all the, are the costs of that portion, and they go to CalOES for the portions they deny. So we're going to have more to come on that. Environmental permitting and monitoring also always a large setback in disasters. It's not really setting back on time too much, as far as I know right now. Mostly, it's just FEMA's, you know, lack of conducting these site inspections in a timely manner. I'm going conversations with the state with the submerged roads. We're going to have more for the county on that over the next coming weeks. CalOES leadership is focused on this topic right now pretty heavily. They are pushing on FEMA as well to fund as much as possible. Eligibility considerations for opening those previously submerged roads, as Mitchell said earlier. Opening those roads prematurely does greatly jeopardize the availability of funding from FEMA. They look at it as negligence. Obviously, that's extremely inconvenient. But that's kind of the way FEMA looks at it. So we did get those site inspections done. They do have, you know, proof of how the roads looked, so there is that. However, you know, nobody can say keep the roads closed, but that's, that's the advice for federal funding until they've made their determination, which, again, pushing on them full bore to make that decision as quick as possible. Next slide, please. Yeah, as discussed earlier, pretty much, these are just some of the points that we already stated earlier on. Without visible surface damage, we've broken out these roads into different sections that we can provide to you as well that we plan to go between CalOES and FEMA with. Once again, I do think it would be very good, we're going to try to work with your guys' county as well as Tulare on drafting a letter to go congressional on this and really put the pressure on and ratchet up the pressure to go about changing this policy, you know. We're all about infrastructure, we're all about rebuilding, but when it comes down to it, FEMA isn't delivering on that promise of, you know, rebuilding better, building better, building back better, all those kinds of things. So we're really going to put the congressional pressure, federal pressure on that to, you know, deliver, deliver on the promises that they should deliver on for, you know, counties that obviously clearly deserve it. Next slide. All right, I think this is where I cut it off, but thank you for letting me speak and look forward to briefing you guys out more when we have more answers from CalOES as well as FEMA. And we're going to keep the pressure on them to keep the process moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
So this is where I'm jumping in for the fiscal impact. Before I start, I wanted to thank Wendy for the previous item, you know, and Eric for bringing it to the forefront to administration, just because these are large fiscal impacts to the county, and it is, does impact countywide our budget. You know, we are a rural county. Our discretionary funding is limited, you know, and that's why, you know, this is a large issue for our county. In total cost of repairing, this was included in your agenda item for the county roads, which is a total of 20 rows, the, which is being requested right now, is $25,766,931. We are also requesting through a FHWA, which is that Caltrans that Mitchell had indicated, and that's an additional $35,944,000. 30 million is for roads, and then 5 million is for the Houston Avenue Bridge. Again, FEMA's stance to adhere to that submerged road policy really, really hinders our ability right now to receive that funding. I do want to also indicate and let the board know that, you know, the road fund, the road fund balance is approximately 15 million, and that's 15 million takes care of all the roads in the county. So this is a, a large issue of the county. If we are actively appealing FEMA's policy, it would be in the county's best interest to keep the roads closed, especially since we are, since the study shows that our roads are compromised. By opening them, we would be indicating that our roads are fine, which could potentially result in repair costs falling onto the county in the future. That concludes our presentation. We are ready to answer any question. I also want to thank Mitchell and Patricio for really helping put this presentation together last minute for the board today. Thank you.
Thank you, Curia.
At this time, we're going to open it up for questions, and I know we have some comments, people here today. So is there a list or?
The first speaker is Laura Brown.
I didn't, I didn't call you back, I knew I couldn't answer any of your questions.
No problem, and I'm sorry, my notes got a little wild after the presentation, so. Thank you, Chairman Verboen, members of the board. My name is Laura Brown. I work at J.G. Boswell Company. And so I am their environmental resources manager, so I manage the environmental regulatory programs for the company. My comments are in regards to the road closures at the Tulare Lake Bottom. As the roads have dried out after the flooding and the local economy is trying to get back to normal functionality as best we can, we, the roads are seeing traffic. So I know that all of you have taken drives out there. We're seeing traffic. It is being used. We greatly appreciate the support of emergency services that have been out there, and there has been some flexibility granted for essential services. And so I think we're working in a positive direction. I do have a map, actually, if you would permit me. I know I can't move it out, but.
Let's get to the point.
Can hand it out. It's just that we have no capability to show the members of the public who are online.
Yeah, let me know what works best, but I created a map because I'm trying to get an idea of the size and the scope of the issue. And so in gray is highlighted for sections on the ranch, and this is just for one company. There's more farmers out there on the lake bottom. And so this is encompassing all of the, there's four, five priority roads that we're looking at, and then I color coded it in green being the roads that when you drive on, you can still pretty easily drive on. Because we have staff from the prisons that are using this on their regular commute. You have people in agriculture operations that are using this in their commute as well. And then yellow are the areas I drove through on Friday. And so I started marking everything up, and so that's where you're going to need, like, some kind of temporary roadworks and patching jobs. And these are things that I know the county is extremely well equipped to handle. Red are some of the pictures that you saw on the screen. So those are going to be kind of complete overhauls. Those are very dangerous situations that we wouldn't want to put employees or trucks on. So I'd be happy to give that to you at a later time or email it, however you like. Okay.
Haven't you already emailed that to Dominic? You showed me that map about a month ago, and I asked you to send it to me before it to Dominic, where I put you in touch with Dominic directly. Doesn't he have that already?
No, I gave you five bullet points of our priority roads, and so here they're displayed on the map. But you're right, I did email it to you and to Dominic. So I think I would like to, to impress upon, unfortunately, the Farm Bureau wasn't able to come here today, but Dusty's been keeping close to us on this. These road impacts have direct impact on industry's ability to stimulate economic growth. And although ag represents a large share of the county economy, you also have to think about the support industries that are created and funded through agriculture, trucking, welding, equipment dealers, restaurants, the list goes on. The ag multiplier effect is shown that for ag jobs, for every one ag job, four other subsidiary jobs are created. And so that's pretty significant in this county. The roads that we are seeing are being used, in some cases by employees. At a company level, we are taking efforts to encourage them not. Are you being used in some cases by employees. Uh, at a company level, we are taking efforts to encourage them not to use the roads. Um, in so much that we're offering stipends to employees. Because they're having to take a longer route in order to get to their place of work. And so we're trying to be as progressive as we can in this effort and we want to work with the county in finding solutions. I understand that there are limitations with the submerged road um. Efforts, but I think it's also worth looking at all of these roads individually and thinking about. A way forward on each of these roads. Each one is going to have different needs. It'll have different engineering requirements, but I think some of these can be easily addressed. And also when we talk about how we're budgeting money, in some sense, we're getting bogged down in the bureaucratic process of this. And this isn't anything new. We see this in every industry. California is plagued with regulatory compliance and new legislative efforts. That are making it harder for business to operate every day. Maybe it's time to evaluate whether the costs that we're spending on staff time on consultants, on lobbyists. Could somehow be converted into opening up a couple of the roads. So I think I'm gonna conclude my comments there. Um, but I will offer that I was out there on Friday. I drove each of these roads that I highlighted. There's five. And if anyone would like to drive along with me one day, I am more than happy to have you.
Laura, I, I do have a question. Not supposed to question people who have comments, but I, I went out there myself and I noticed that. You know, you had, they came out there airboats and removed all your transformers from your wells. And I know that you would like to farm a hundred percent of your ground this year and you need those transformers installed. Is P G N E able to get those transformers installed on your property or will they not go around the closure of?
Well, maybe a George question, but P G N E is out there right now. I'm really impressed at how fast they're getting the lines up, but.
I didn't know if they had a policy that kept them doing their job because of road closure. It's very important that we have P G N E uh work with you. And if there is a reason, I mean, I, they're out there now. They're not having any problems. Okay. Thank you.
They are doing the line replacement on roads that are designated closed.
And you have that map you're gonna email us shows the roads that are very important to you right now. And you guys have. I think a hundred fifty or so thousand acres and, and there's not a lot of pavement roads. You do a lot of dirt road stuff too. So.
Right.
It's just getting to and from. So uh, I think we can work out some kind of program.
Mr. Chair, these are all public roads? These are all public roads or private roads?
The ones that have highlighted here are public roads.
Okay, so you feel that you've discovered damage that the county and FEMA officials have not discovered?
No, these, these are roads that are theoretically considered closed. Um, but which are. I'm not gonna say roadworthy because in some cases, you know, I would find it concerning, but traps.
You're driving them, turning in the map and you're driving them because I suggested to you that to prioritize these roads.
Correct.
We could send it to them. So that's why you're driving.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Thanks for the clarification.
Um, so these are the roads that are county roads. It's also important to keep in consideration, I mean, it's budgets are tough with public works. We understand that. The roads weren't. In a wonderful condition before the flood. So even as the flood water.
Don't do that.
Okay.
Remo rose and uh they need to be put back to the way they were before the flooding.
They were smooth.
Nothing. And you drove in a really extremely light car that didn't have batteries, so it didn't do any damage to the road.
It was my electric vehicle.
Yeah, I went out there with a drone.
No piles.
No, no electric. No, that's too heavy. Okay, thank you very much.
Absolutely. If you need anything else, don't hesitate to reach out.
All right, thank you very much.
And if I can request for you to send that to the B O S question so I can put it up for the public. I appreciate it. George Wartzel is the next speaker.
Morning, George. How are you today?
Morning, all of you. I'm George Wartzel from the Boswell Company. Um, I've uh learned a lot this morning and I appreciate. Uh, you all taking a look at this. Just a couple of things that elevated up on our radar screen back in. Late December and January, it looked like we were gonna be able to hopefully, God willing, farm all of our acres for the first time in four years. After three years that drought, a year of flood, they start looking at logistics and infrastructure and. Um, currently today, we have a hundred and forty people working out in the fields. And here in the next couple of weeks, that could go up by several hundred. We got people coming from all over. As Laura alluded to, we're, we're paying a month, a weekly stipend. Uh, we're happy to do that to keep people off the closed roads, but we get to this July, for the end of the first week of July, we start tomato harvest. With the acres that will get planted, it's over thirty-eight thousand loads of tomatoes. If you get into cotton harvest, if we're able to plant everything, we get the yields that we're projecting to hit, it's twenty-two thousand loads of modules. Every one of those loads historically has touched these roads impacted by the flood. So I don't have the experience that Mitchell has on being a road engineer. Um, but I've driven on county roads, a big part of my life and. Uh, I think some of these roads, I, I would hope that you could, could take a look at them and, and uh. I get the FEMA deal, but uh if we could open up some of those roads, it would certainly help. Not only the Boswell Company get from our shop and our field offices out to some of these locations and some of our employees, but I know it certainly helped our neighbors as well. So anyway, just for your consideration, be happy looking at any of those roads with you. And some of these places uh that need to, need to be addressed and fixed, I have all the confidence in the world that our, our county road team can fix them. They're not. Like, it's not all like Tenth Avenue where there was some undercutting and those areas in the undercutting in Tenth Avenue. Is two, three hundred yards long. Uh, it's, it's, it's gonna be expensive to fix. I get it, but it's not the whole thing. So anyway, I appreciate your time and if I can be of any help, please let me know.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Jason Proctor.
Morning, Jason.
I wanna voice my concern for the, the safety and the economy for the Corcoran area. Just to expand on what George said, I'm in the transportation business and we spend. Several months, a year, maybe twenty-five thousand loads going over these roads. So uh. I uh, I don't know what the answer is, but we need to get them open one way or another. So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
The next speaker is Scott Daniels.
Morning, Scott.
Good morning, everyone. Uh, Scott Daniel, Ione Young's Commercial Transfer. We are a transportation company, works a lot with the Boswell Company as well as five of your major uh tomato processing companies here in California. And not only do we run all over the state, but we source a lot of our product right here from Kings County. So these growers uh support other canneries besides just the Boswell Company. Um, specifically in that five road area that Laura talked about, we estimate that we've run over four to five million miles in ninety days. That's what my company alone does. And these other processors and other transportation companies outside of what I do. Will be in this area trying to support your local growers, your local uh workers, your harvesters, your field people that are. Everyone's trying to work and there's a whole economy there that needs to be supported. And so these roads are important. And uh, we run a ton of miles in this area and it's not just for any one company. It's for really supporting all of these processors in the state. So.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
That's all I was aware of.
Anybody else? Yes, sir. Don't cut the sheriff off.
Right. I'm gonna, I'm gonna be careful in my choice of words, so I'm not a witness for FEMA. Um, thank you, Dave Robinson, Kings County Sheriff. From the safety perspective, there is some work that needs to be done now. Temporary emergency work, especially on Tenth Avenue where the roadway edge is gone. We're driving through there, ambulance is driving through there, fire is driving through there and the roadway on the edges are gone. We're driving through there at night when there's no lights out there. It's dangerous. We just need to fix that. I don't care what FEMA says or how long FEMA has to take. We need to spend some money to fix that. Um, ingress and egress from Corcoran has always been a challenge, but it's also a challenge in the Stratford area, especially with the construction going on over there. We use Pueblo Avenue, Nineteenth Avenue, Nevada Avenue to, to get from Stratford to Corcoran and Corcoran to Stratford. We also use Utica Avenue, Sixth Avenue and Tenth Avenue to get from Corcoran to Kettleman City and Kettleman City to Corcoran. Um, so the, the map that was shown, I would imagine has a lot of those same roadways on it where we need some help to get those fixed. Even if they're not perfect, let's get them fixed. And so first and foremost, I do believe there are some carve outs. In the FEMA guidelines for fixing um roads, even for temporary emergency purposes. Um, it seems ridiculous. Let's just face it, from the presentation we heard earlier.
I hear witness.
Yeah, I'll, I'll testify to that. Um, I do also agree though that there are some areas that, that aren't. You know, sixty miles, you know, we don't have sixty miles of the most egregious damage that you saw. That's not, that's not accurate. We have roads that were flooded for sixty miles. Um, we have testing that was done in August and September fifth. To, to get the core samples of roads that were still had flooding next to them, but we haven't had testing on those same roads since then. And so, you know, I'm no engineer, but if you haven't tested since August and September. I'm guessing the moisture content has, has gone a different direction since then with the water being pumped out and also just evaporating. So I think updated testing would make a lot of sense. Now, maybe that doesn't help our case for FEMA, but I personally don't care. Um, these are our roads and, and we need to take care of the people that have to drive on them every single day and that's why we're here. Everything we do has liability and risk. Everything, every decision you make has liability and risk. Um, I'm not saying spend sixty million dollars, but maybe we need to spend a couple of million dollars to at least fix some primary roads so we can keep, 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 keep Kings County up and running. We have partners that we've all worked with. I've been here twenty-nine years and my twenty-nine years, we've worked with all these people. For this long and many of you as well. And why we're not making them a priority and we're waiting on FEMA to me makes no common sense. And I get that there's not a lot of common sense in government. Um, I don't fault our, our agency, our, our county. We're going down this path because we're trying to make sure that the county is covered with the money. One question I'll ask of Eric or Abe. Is originally we got a five million dollar check from Cal O E S. If any of that's still available, maybe we can use some of that. To do some emergency repair work on these roads, to get these roads open. The good news is it's not like my comments on the homeless thing. I can't fix the roads overnight. Um, but we can do something about it. We can do something about it in a shorter term versus a longer term. So I would encourage the board to do something about those roads. That absolutely need some help to keep these businesses running um through this growth season. We touted. As an entire county, the impact that these floods were having on our, our enterprises here in Kings County last year. And the millions of dollars that was lost because they couldn't farm. And now we're holding them up or we're making it harder on them to farm to keep that money coming into Kings County because we're gonna wait on FEMA. It's all closed.
Yeah, the money they generate creates our local government to run fluidly and we can't, we can't hold back. Yes, sir.
Good morning, Board. Dustin Fuller, Tulare Lake Drainage District. Um, I represent roughly two hundred and twenty thousand acres within the Tulare Lake body, representing the Boswell folks, the Gilkey folks who are here today and many other growers. Um, one thing I want to stress is the drainage district along with the flood control district, which I represent, is going through the FEMA process. It is absolutely horrendous. Um, with that said, we need to have a unified message of the loss that this is creating. And I don't know if that's being clarified. I know I had a conversation a little bit with Eric yesterday, but there's a little confusion on who's responsible for what. Is it city? Is it county? Is it Corcoran irrigation district? Is it Tulare Lake drainage district or Cross Creek flood control district? The bottom line is, we need to emphasize the message is that the only people that are hurting is the people that are working in the area. And it needs to be directed on a multifaceted level and I don't feel that message is going through. I know on a success story that we've had at the, the, the drainage district, we removed some pumps early on in anticipation of the flood. We then quickly just got back to work. We cleaned up the whole pump station. We reinstalled the, the, the pumps. We are the only one, I believe, maybe Carrie, correct me if I'm wrong, wi- within Kings County that has been obligated funds. And it's just real quick, real in, real out. We had all our cost estimates in line. We had all our bids set up. We just did the job. We got obligated the funds. So it's real important to, to get all your ducks in row with FEMA and A to Z with your cost estimates and just start laying it out and, and going to town. But again, I can't stress, we need to be unified on this with uh the impacts it is to these growers. Thank you.
Thank you. Dominic, you're on the hot seat.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dominic Trabisky, Public Works Director. So. One of the points I wanted to make, um, obviously passenger vehicles, pickup trucks can go around the barricades. You know, when they drive these roads, they appear to be in good shape. It's really the heavy truck traffic that, you know, tear these roads apart. And, you know, we're talking about magnitudes of tens of thousands of trucks going on these roads. Um, I think it's certainly prudent to try to identify some primary routes that maybe we could do some initial work on. Um, it will preclude us from getting uh FEMA funding, uh, but I'm not real confident we're gonna get a whole lot of funding anyway. So. You know, I, I understand that something needs to happen. Um, but again, just looking at these roads. And, and driving a passenger vehicle on them doesn't really give you the flavor of, of what the potential is when you start putting heavy truck traffic.
Thank you. I think the concern is tomato harvest, and I think we, we, I don't know if we have any wheat harvests coming up this year or not. But uh tomato harvest, wheat harvest is probably about the fifteenth of May till about the fifteenth of June. And right after that, tomato harvest starts, you know, so that's a concern. We'll have hundred degree days here before middle of May. And that will uh speed up the drying of the, of the beds. And so. I uh, I think we ought to get together and, and identify the roads that we can work around. I know uh Boswell has a lot of uh. Play roads or dirt roads they run on themselves that aren't affected, that they can get to the main road. Maybe we identify an area that makes it okay for truck traffic. And get through this. I'm not gonna have someone that their tomato fields rot and not get their tomatoes off their, off their land because. We're afraid that FEMA won't refund our money. They're not refunding our money anyway for our homeless stuff that we didn't want to do. So. Let's, let's stick up for people to pay our taxes and, and pay our salaries. So appreciate it. Maybe you get together with, with uh Jason Proctor and, and uh. Boswell and whoever else Gilkey's here and see what work, what, what minimal amount of road they need to get their, their crops off their field.
Absolutely. But again, it's not just the FEMA funding. The, the concern is that once we start putting truck traffic on these roads, they're gonna fall apart.
You gotta tell me. You gotta tell me fifteenth. If you were on my property and you keep me from doing business, we'd have a problem. I would do it myself and I'd deal with it later. You know, it might be court, but uh you can't stop. Carmen, you can't stop someone from doing business. The, the mother nature did what they could last year and kept everybody from working and we knew that. But uh if they're able to get in and plant their crops, the ground's dry enough. I mean, it's dry enough to get a tractor on a field. I mean, it's gotta be dry enough on the roadway. So let's find a road that, the minimal amount of road that we can use. So the minimal amount of impact to the county. Let's call FEMA, have them come out. I mean, the taxes that, 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 that we make off the farm products. Pays the salary of the FEMA individual. So uh, I know it makes, that's common sense and we don't have common sense in our federal letters, let's face it right now. So let's uh, let's work together and see what we can do to take care of our people and our, our community.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir. So, um, one, first of all, I want to thank staff, Carrie, everybody at this school. Um, Dominic, uh, everyone who uh took the time to organize this presentation today for the public. And uh, you know, for anyone who thinks that this isn't a priority. Or who may think that we're not talking about roads prior to this agenda, and we're always talking about these roads. Comes up during um our opportunities to question staff, this is um, this is not. An issue that is below the board's supervisors radars. It is a priority issue. So that being said, um, Mr. Chairman, if you're talking about. You know, just ignoring FEMA and, and, and the fiscal responsibilities that we have here at the county, then I believe that's gonna take uh. More than just comments from the board. That takes action because um. I believe unless something changed during the, the period of the time of the emergency. The board appointed and gave sole authority on these types of decisions to Dominic Trabisky. So unless I missed something, did we take that back away from him? Counsel, did um, does that level of authority still along with uh Dominic?
You mean that we did in the emergency declaration? No, that wouldn't apply to the decisions that are being made today.
Okay, so then today for clarification for the board and for the public, the board could um. the board could move forward forward either agendize an item next week to or take action today to make a decision on our own to do some of the things that Supervisor Boone is talking about as far as was open the roads or repair some roads and will risk the FEMA funding and that fiscally this is going to be the responsibility of the county.
It's only agenda for agenda is for a study session today. If the board wants to take action, it will need to come back, but the board could direct staff to bring it back for action at a later date.
Okay, so with so with that, then a couple of questions. Dominic, is it, does FEMA look at it by an all or nothing type of assistance meeting if we start piecemealing these and and prioritizing and picking fifteen roads for us to spend county money on and start repairing? Or are we out of the picture?
Just for those segments. So it it would only be the segments that we elect to open to trap.
Okay, send the ones that we choose not to open. They're still available for.
We could pick them in on model roads if that work to get the job done, and we have several months to do it.
Okay, and just to circle back to to your question, if I'm understanding it correctly. So as road commissioner, I do have the authority as granted by the board to open or close the roads. But again, if the board directs me to take certain actions, then of course I I would.
Well, I know I know that all the growers out there have maps or fields, and they know which fields are going to come off at a certain time. At that point, they can direct to you. You could help work with them and say, okay, this works for us. And we'll know where our problems, we're not going to get funding for this road here. And I I don't think it's going to be hundreds of miles or thirty or miles because, you know, they're on, they're on most of the time. You can drive, you can drive from Stratford almost to Corcoran without even going on a road. So there are there are ways around it. So I think we could do minimal amount of damage.
Can you put into scope, I think, if I heard Riker said you only have fifteen million in reserve road funds or what what what's your budget?
So that is the road fund, but that's utilized to pay staff, to pay for equipment, to pay for all of the road work that you see throughout the county. So all the patching, the shoulder work, the repair. So that's an annual budget that's utilized.
Okay, so I guess for people's expectations, whatever the amount of money is that you've that you feel you could spend under if the board directed you next week, hey, Dominic, drop this money. What what's the what's the circle of improvements? Is it like this? Is it like this?
That's a great question. The first thing I would need to do is identify the surplus funds that that we can, you know, expend. Look at the scope of work that we're planning on doing on the roadway segments. I mean, I it's certainly information I can get back to you, but I I couldn't answer off the top of my head.
Because if the board were to direct that action for you to deplete all your funds, I imagine this is mostly on the southern side of of the county. So every action has a consequence. So the flip side is everybody else's areas to the north, I'll just be general, say, north of Kansas, all the way forward to northwest to Kings County. All their potholes, all their concerns, all their road issues are going to have to be ignored, right? Because the money is going to get depleted to the south side.
Yes and no. It 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 depends. So if we hired a contractor to do some of the work and the road crew could continue, you know, with with those other functions. But again, you know, that money is not just for materials. It also pays for staff labor. You know, pays for some surveying activities so that that budget is it it's utilized, you know, annually. And and we do have a surplus, but I couldn't just take the whole fifteen million and apply it over here. It it would decimate the road.
Well, it would be prudent to go and put money into roads that are going to come apart anyways.
And and that's another good point.
And we just had, you know, they closed the road on Highway forty one. And so they were going around it on Twenty Second Avenue. Part of it was kind of in disrepair and and one rainy event destroyed the road. Several trucks went through and this road's gone. So we got to be careful. And I think we can, we can figure out a way to minimize our damages if you work with the growers out there.
Well, and the only reason I'm asking these is is what, one, I'm open to to some action. I mean, a lot of these roads are in my district and obviously I want to be helpful. But that being said, I heard fiscal concerns from our fiscal department head, from our county C A O, because they're not looking at it as just a few road repairs. They're looking at what I believe to be the impacts of the whole county, which is the responsibility of the Board of Supervisors to be fiscally conservative with the monies that we have to help run Kings County. That being said, I also prioritize what government is here for. There's a lot of bells and whistles that I would happily, if we had to vote to to cut to prioritize roads because I believe we're not here for a hundred different things. I believe we're here for a few things, public safety, roads being a few of them. And so but to go there would be would mean that that that, you know, we're in a pretty bad situation if if we had to go there. So I guess what I'm trying to get to is do you foresee that if we start going down the road and spending money and 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 directing you to aggressively spend your your county road budget, that now you're going to be going to the county C A O and saying, hey, I need to touch that general fund budget?
Well, again, we would have to protect those existing obligations that we already have first. You know, because that road budget already has funds obligated, you know, again, for staff or equipment for other things. So then looking at the surplus, you know, we could certainly get out there with our roads crew. We could start doing the shoulder backing on tenth, you know, there there's things we could do. You know, but again, if the concern is if we put the the truck traffic on prematurely and then the roads fall apart, now you're talking millions of dollars, and that's money we just don't have.
That's that's, I get that scenario. It's your job protects. I guess a simple question is, is there enough money in your budget that if we bring it back next week and the vote says yes, Dominic, go spend the money, that everyone in this room is going to walk away happy?
No.
It would require analysis.
That's the picture I'm trying to get to.
Yes, but.
It's easier to repair a road and keep maintain it and replace it.
And if I may add, from a legal perspective, there is additional risk if the roads have been declared unfit for travel and we open them up for travel and there's later an accident on the road, then it would be sure liability for the county.
But I I believe knowing a little bit about Lake Bottom, the major part of the road to be used would be delivering the tomatoes to Boswell Processing Plant right there and getting the tomatoes out of the field. I think we can work something out. We have plenty of time, but we have to work on it. We have to have communication between the growers and yourself. And they're going to have to, you know, they're going to have to use some of their roads also and water trucks, whatever it takes to get to the the good part of the road that can handle the truck jumping. There's no sense opening the roads up if they're going to tear them up and and when six trucks go over it. Just a waste of our time.
Well, I do think it is prudent, though, to to do some updated analysis. You know, I don't know that it's going to show much different, but certainly certainly time.
Good. Couple of things. I I would like to see us take action and soon so that we can we can help with that tomato harvest. I mean, at the end of the day, all this, basically, we if we support commerce, commerce more supports us. It essentially is the is is the reason for the whole Corcoran community and and the surrounding areas. I I too hear you Supervisor Valley, but I'm I'm a pretty conservative person fiscally. But they've also suffered the most. So in this particular case, it kind of comes down to triad. Right? They've suffered the most, so maybe we should. And 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 I think that we can mitigate this to where we can, we can decide, you know, what few roads we can open to try and accommodate some of these these requests. So I'd like to see that. I do have a question, though. How come the last testing was done in September? Is that something we can do independent of FEMA or we have to do it with them? Or why is that?
No, we we can do it independently. We hired a lab out of Fresno to do that work. And, you know, that that was the initial response that we got. We've been working with FEMA. Okay, so that's already in process, actually. All right. I mean, you definitely want some time to pass for the for the roads to dry out, hopefully the water table to drop.
It it just seems like because this is such a severe problem, we should be testing more more frequently so that we could we could we could reach a consensus quicker.
I I don't disagree, but again, the report didn't state, you know, wait three months until, you know, the 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 water's gone and then retest or you could open. It said if you open these roads, you're going to have, you know, catastrophic failure. So I I don't know that retesting is going to give us different results, but.
It's different ground too. The ground's really heavy. It's old moisture more time. You can bury a tractor if you're not careful. But if the tractor didn't get in the field and farm prominent, we should relook at the roads.
Well, evaporation works very well on the surface, but not so much when it's, you know, encapsulated in in soil, so.
Chairman, could I also, if we're going to go down that road, also ask Dominic to take the perspectives of the sheriff and fire and also American ambulance because that was pointed out. You know, I know we're talking about growers because the growers are in the room, but this impacts more than the growers. As counsel pointed out, we opened up these roads. It's private citizens going to be using the roads too. And so these roads get damaged and someone gets hurt, then obviously it's bigger, it's bigger scope than farming and and I don't want to come across as being opposed to it because if you bring a budget, right, that can get some improvements going, then I'm all for it. The reason why I'm asking these types of questions is because I want assurances. I want assurances that as we start spending the money, there's no trickle down effect that's going to affect our ability to still negotiate with firefighters who don't have a union contract, that are out of contract right now. Our deputy sheriffs, we need more. Our fiscal impacts that are going to hurt us because it's not just all about the perspective of the farmers and the growers. We get that. They spent they the economy, that's the backbone of the economy and respect the hell out of you guys. But what the things that we have to deal with as a whole, seven days a week, we can't forget about all of that as we're having this. Last week is all about the homeless and want to build a homeless shelter right here and ask where the money's coming from. Well, we got to go find it. We don't have the monies, right? And so the point is there's issues every Tuesday on this agenda that we got to deal with. And it's our jobs to balance it and be fiscally conservative as possible to to protect their taxpayer dollars too.
Dwayne Cooper, Road Superintendent. I know we were in the process of working out on the, having a cutoff to get that SSB one money. That's going to take seven million dollars for the first year. And then after that, it goes down because we're going to, it's the primary getting everything started. I understand Boswell's position, Proctors, everybody that farms down there. I understand their position. To do this, and we're going to have to use a contractor. They're going to get prevailing waves from that A B one twenty eight or whatever was it passed years ago. County can't go out and do the reconstruction. We could do temporary work on the shoulders and then patch them. But to get them to done, to where they're feasible and safe, that would take more of a contractor to do. And I understand that it's the road department's budget that's going to be hit the most on this. I'm going to say, yes, there's possibility that we may have to come after the general fund.
Thank you for being honest.
It's it's a lot of money that needs to be put up. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Sir.
Just my view real quick, I promise. Just to speak to the sheriff's question, the five million that we got from Cal O E S. Yeah, they came out and said, oh, here's this great, here's, it's an advance. And we have to start paying that back to Cal O E S once we start getting FEMA money reimbursed to us. So it's not like it's free money that's just sitting there for us to use. We got to pay that back. It's an obligation for the county. So I just want to let everyone know that.
Take your name and address for record.
My name's Kurt Gilkey. I'm a farmer in Corcoran, California. The pictures you saw, basically, that's taken on our farm or around our farm. I think if you could prioritize Tenth Avenue from Pueblo to Redding and fix that, it's going to solve a big part of the problems. And when we've got, we're barricaded on Niles Avenue west of Tenth to Twelfth and up to Nevada. So our property is being used as a thoroughfare for people that need to get out there. Now, that visibly is not a lot of damage there. And I think the roads are probably okay, although I'm not an engineer. But, you know, that's not the huge problem. The problem is Tenth Avenue, and it's a safety problem. But it's a, it's a avenue that not only Boswell uses, but the Gilkeys use it to get our equipment around because that way we don't go through town with, you know, white equipment. We have modules on Tenth Avenue. So Tenth Avenue from Pueblo to Redding, if you guys could get to working on that, we know you got an excavator. We saw it come down to the lake a year ago. So if you could start working on the shoulders with your own excavator and then whatever you need to make that safe and passable, we can drive on dirt roads. We always do. But anyway, I I would I would think that'd be a really good start, especially with your limited budget. But if you could look at that first, in my opinion, that'd be a good idea.
Thank you. So I I would like to have staff meet with the five or six growers and a couple of trucking companies with Dominic and identify just like Mr. Gilkey said, what really need to be looked at first? And then stay off the road that we're going to destroy. Maybe find some side roads to drive on. It's going to be tough. I know there's, you're probably going to have about two or three hundred truck drivers that are kind of hard to communicate to. They're going to do what they want. So anyway, I think we should at least have some kind of communication with the local growers and the landowners so we can at least get started. We have time here. If we wait till May fifteenth, we don't have time. They're going to get their crops off, and I just want to make sure we minimize our our damage to our roads. But if we can have one route we can work on, get started on, maybe get the testing sped up a little bit. I know that that heavy ground is is bad. I got some property with, you know, has a a bog hole on it. It's one of my one of my parking lots and it's constant. Water stays there all year long. It never dries up. So there might be some things here. We we will never build a thing for two or three years. So we don't want to make that any worse. So we could have staff, Dominic, your staff, reach out to Mitchell with Boswell. And I forgot your name, the trucking company in the back. Got work with Scott and Scott Daniels, and let's get an idea of what we can do to work together.
Mr. Chairman, I I support I support that, but I'd also like to express, just like Mr. Gilkey gave the limited scope, I would ask that Boswell please be very conservative as well with what you could really get by, right? Not this scenario that if the county did nothing to the roads, there would be no tomato harvest. I don't believe that's true. I believe, just like we saw last year, if you're going to farm, you're going to farm and you're going to make it work. Okay? And so whatever is limited to the budget, then I think the board who's who's spoken so far, I think that you see that we're here to help and it'd be helpful, but but our resources are limited there. Thanks, sir.
I know you can drive. I've driven around the lake a few times. There's some, you can go around it pretty good without hitting the pavement. So but we're going to have some problems with the pavement road. So I know that I don't know for a fact it it takes like five trucks at eighty thousand pounds on a road that's not ready to be destroyed. So we don't want to get to that point.
I mean, and anyone who's just coming, like you're coming from Kettleman on Utica and you get near Utica and Dairy, I'm sure you've been right there to turn left to come into.
You had to go go around it.
Any, and I'm not talking growers now. I'm talking anybody who who's just driving that road and they don't know any better and you're coming at night. Those are accidents waiting to happen. That's a lot of major damage for at least ten or fifteen yards leading up to that stop sign there at Utica and Dairy.
Okay, any more comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman, and how long would you like us to come back?
Tomorrow. Tomorrow, special emergency meeting.
So we're March. So I would say come back like April fifteenth to us, but meet within the next week or two with the, the people that spoke today. I think we can come up with something. I know, I know Dominic's got his hands full and Charlie explained the well, we're going to cut in a, you have a fund of money. It's as major compared to what we spend anyway. So, uh, I think we can just find some roads that we can, we can save, some we can stay off. So, uh, but we have to work together. We have to work with, we have to communicate with them. That's the only way we can get this done. Any more questions or comments? Yes, sir. You're our connection to FEMA. I'd like to have you in a meeting as well.
I would love to be there.
Okay.
Here to fully advocate as much as possible.
You know, I made a good comment. They switch staff. Once the staff understands our concerns, they remove them from the, from the, uh, from the communication. We have to start over. So nothing gets done.
Yeah. Um, that's why we're working to do as much as we can on behalf of you guys. But Larry, um, from the very beginning, we took over, we advocated to run the site inspections ourselves to, uh, mitigate that whole issue. Um, and it proved pretty accurate. You know, Larry's got more money, uh, at least in the system with FEMA, uh, on this disaster than I think anybody in the event. Um, so that's, you know, what we really advocate to do, just push to kind of make them as minimal of a factor as possible in this. But what I want to make a comment to in regards to the geotechnical testing, uh, FEMA's made it pretty clear they're not going to sway on those tests, which is completely illogical because that's to me, the most, uh, accurate way to say that those roads are damaged.
So it's not going to pay for the testing?
Or they most likely won't pay for the testing and it's not going to influence their decision to pay for the roads. They're very strict on this. Uh, also illogical submerged roads policy that says visible damage, uh, which is obviously roads are much more than visible damage. Uh, so that's, that's been their policy on this stuff and they're, they're sticking to it pretty hard. So, uh, just as a thing from my point of view, uh, the geotechnical more testing of it isn't going to enhance the chances of eligibility. Uh, I think in some way it will enhance the case, um, overall, and that's.
Well, I, I would do the testing just for our own idea of how bad it is. If, if we're testing one, two, three of the five foot down and it's wet, wet, I mean, if you, a eighty thousand pound truck can compress mud or dirt, you know, five foot down the ground after time, you know, it just keeps making us budget, keeps moving it back and forth very soon. And water comes up, road disappears and now we're not fixing it for sixty eight months.
Yes, sir. I, I agree one hundred percent. Uh, yeah, I just wanted to make that note for.
Yeah, we find areas like that. We know, we know we can't fix that. We can't allow trucks on it. So, yeah, we have to use it for our guideline. And then that way we can, we got to find a new way. Who's going to offer up their, their road to get to and from.
I agree. And again, you know, I say we push hard to write a letter to go very congressional on this and really put pressure from the top.
But again, you know, we can't get, uh, some of the roads we cannot open, not because of political pressure. It's just that they're not going to be able to open up because it's just too wet. And that's a part of life. We'll have to figure out a way to go around it. And therefore the communication comes in with, uh, with staff and in local growers.
Definitely.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have to vote on that or you got direction? Good. Everybody's okay with that?
Yeah, I, I would kind of like to see maybe the compaction test versus a moisture test. And just see what kind of compaction is, uh, underneath those roadways because I think, I think I would, uh, gain more knowledge from the compaction test than I would, uh, moisture. Because a lot of those roads have been around for a long time.
And it might be good.
It might be good.
Okay, I agree.
So I think, I think a compaction test might be more readily available as to that. I know you're not going to be able to test the whole, uh, compaction under, under those roadways. But it, it would be interesting to see whether the compaction test comes back versus the moisture.
Any compact test, they go through the roadway or on the side? Mitchell. They go in, in the middle of the road right down now?
Uh, so compaction itself, we won't be able to do it. There's other methods like DCP, they got reconventrometers.
Okay.
And those sort of testing that you can do on those, but compaction testing wouldn't be possible.
Good. Even with the X-ray?
Uh, you could do other methods, like I said, but compaction itself, it's, it's a process that, that's when you work the material and you start testing. But for now to evaluate the roads, you, you wouldn't be able to, you could do some other tests and would more or less say the same, same information. So we can, we can look at that.
Correct. And we may have, we have a hot May, I'd like to solve all our problems. You know, we've had it before, I think twenty third, twenty, I forget, ninety-seven, two thousand and three or something, we had, uh, eighty-seven, it was a hundred and thirteen in May. So we may have that again too. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're good. Okay. Good luck. Worked out. Okay, we'll move on now to the next, uh, administrative hearing. Item A, uh, Evan Jones. And so am I going to start this right here, Council?
Evan Jones will introduce the matter. Um, and then when it's time to conduct the hearing, then you can follow that script.
Okay. Hi, Evan, you're in. Thank you, George.
Good morning, Chairman and members of the board. I'm Evan Jones, your purchasing manager and agent for the County of Kings. I'm here before your board in a rehearing. The protest and appeal for request for proposal twenty twenty-four dash twenty-one. New Perceptions North LLC is appealing the Kings County Behavioral Health's decision to award the Adult Substance Use Disorder Treatment Services, Champions Recovery Alternative Programs Incorporated, and Recover Medical Group PC through the request for proposal process, RFP twenty twenty-four dash twenty-one. In this rehearing, the board has one of three choices to make in regards to this. The New Perceptions protest lacks merit in Behavioral Health's recommendation to award RFP twenty twenty-four dash twenty-one to Champions Recovery Alternative Programs Incorporated and Recover Medical Group PC was reached in a fair and reasonable manner and therefore will not be overturned by the board. Or New Perceptions protest has merit and the board finds that all proposals received in response to RFP twenty twenty-four twenty-one must be reevaluated by individuals other than those involved in initial evaluation committee. Or New Perception protest has merit and the board finds RFP twenty twenty-four dash twenty-one failure rejects all proposals received in response thereto and directs Behavioral Health to issue a new RFP for Adult Substance Use Disorder Treatment Services. I come before you today to recommend that you deny the protest by Kings U and affirm, I mean, sorry, uh, Kings U, sorry, New Perceptions and affirm the decision of Behavioral Health in awarding the Adult Substance Use Disorder Treatment Services to Champions Recovery Alternative Programs and Recover Medical Group PC. So the purchasing division, which, uh, I oversee, was tasked of releasing the RFP. The RFP was released October twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. We received three responses on November thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. The responses were from Champions, Alternative Programs Incorporated, Recover Medical Group PC, and New Perceptions North LLC. General Health picked up the copies December fourth, twenty twenty-three. And then the proposals were then evaluated by a committee from Behavioral Health. Based upon the highest scoring of proposals, Behavioral Health came to the conclusion to award service contract to Champions and Recover. On January nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, purchasing sent out a notice of intent to award letter via email to Champions and Recover. At the same time, sent the announcement of the intent to award to New Perception. On the same day, I received an informal email from New Perceptions that they were protesting the award. On January twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, received a phone call from New Perception CEO Paul Flint Anderson, requesting that we meet to discuss the reasoning why they weren't chosen, and I declined. On January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, received the formal protest email from New Perception. On January thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, I sent a memo to them denying tests. On February fifth, twenty twenty-four, they then appealed to the clerk of the board, wanting the board of supervisors to hear their appeal. Again, I recommend that you deny the protest by Kings U and affirm the decision by Abridged Health in awarding the specialty mental health services to children and youth mental health systems incorporated, I mean, to, um, Champions Recovery and Recover PC. And I stand ready to answer any questions we have.
Thank you. Any questions before we open it up? Okay, at this time, we will, uh, do the administrative hearing. Uh, so we are here today to consider the appeal of New Perceptions to the notice of award reference number, uh, twenty twenty-four dash twenty-one issued on behalf of the County Behavioral Health Department. And at this time, we'll go, uh, the hearing will proceed as follows. Uh, Behavioral Health will provide an overview of the RFP process and outcomes of behavioral.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Supervisors. I'm Lisa Lewis, Director of Kings County Behavioral Health, and I'm here with our Deputy Director, Kristy Lepke. We sorry, we couldn't be in chambers today. We're attending an annual Cal Quick Conference with many of the other behavioral health, um, departments from all over the state. Thank you to Evan for covering the RFP process. Very briefly, I'd like to address why the department has gone out to RFP at this time. Kings County Behavioral Health has had a long, has had longstanding contracts with many vendors for several core mental health and sun services for many decades. The requirements for these services have changed over ti- over the years, and it's appropriate for the department to go out to RFP to open up the opportunities to all interested entities to ensure that the county and residents are receiving the best practices for services in the most cost-effective manner. As you know, in addition to this RFP for Adult Substance Use Disorder Services, the department's started a process a few years ago by going out to RFP for our children's system of care. And we are currently in the RFP process for our adult system of care. Through this process of payment reform under Cal AIM, all behavioral health departments in the state have had the opportunity to transition to a fee-for-service model for reimbursement, which allows a provider more flexibility um, to enhance services and allows the department to request for entities to expand services to include physical locations, not just in Hanford, but also in Abinol and Corcoran too, as well as to offer alternate formats of services such as telehealth. This also allows the department to award multiple entity contracts to provide services in these expanded locations. For this RFP, a five-member committee reviewed the three proposals that were received and awarded to entities. Through these awards, we will have the capacity to expand services both in locations and to the number of people served. Kristy and I are here via WebEx to answer any questions you might have regarding this RFP process. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, the board, uh, has an opportunity to ask questions to Behavioral Health staff. Any questions from the board? Mr. Robinson?
Dr. Lewis, are we able to determine the methodology in which, which the decision was made?
I'll allow Kristy to answer that. She's right here. Hold on a minute. Yeah. Morning, what is it?
I think we lost you, Kristy.
Sorry, 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 sorry.
Right again.
Okay, thank you.
There you go. We hear you.
Thanks. So while we, we are unable to speak to the, the outcome of the scores that went, that we reviewed the RFPs and were able to score the RFPs to, we can't discuss um, the, the process that we took the RFP through. So when we received the three, um, we did hold a bidders conference, was able to answer questions and release the responses to those questions to all bidders. We then received the three proposals, um, by the due date and we were able to convene a five-member review committee that reviewed all of those, um, proposals against the scoring that was stipulated in the RFP packet to the bidders. Um, and based on the scores and the, um, the discussion by the review committee, they were able to then recommend forward to executive management, um, the, the two entities that they wanted to award based on, um, all of the totality of the review against the, the matrix that was in the RFP process itself or in the RFP itself to the bidders. And, um, we, executive management was able to, you know, ask questions of the review committee to best understand the decision that they had arrived at. And from there, um, we approved their recommendation of, um, awarding Champions and, uh, Recover Medical Group, uh, for this, or is it Recover for this, um, program.
I see where New Perceptions North had asked several questions. Did we even attempt to address any of those questions?
We did review their, uh, the appeal that came in, the appeal letter. We also, um, reviewed the protest um, and then the evidence that they submitted just before this, um, hearing, um, in accordance with the process. And in reviewing all of the, um, statements that were made in all of the letters for the appeal and the protest, we were unable to find anything that stipulated, uh, an issue with the RFP process that would then merit, um, a, a response.
If I may speak, um, I think some of these questions about addressing the concerns expressed by New Perceptions, um, would probably fall very naturally with this hearing after New Perceptions presents its arguments because then they're actually here and on the record.
Good. Any more questions from the board, New Behavioral Health? Okay, at this time, we'll move it off, move forward and we'll go ahead and, uh, give the appellant, uh, time to present and, uh, make a presentation and have evidence. Uh, the presentation should be focused on whether the RFP process was fair. Uh, no witnesses may be called and only evidence submitted seventy-two hours before hearing will be considered. And so hopefully New Perception is here. Okay, would you like to present your case?
Thank you, and good morning, Mr. Chairman and Board of Supervisors. My name's Flint Anderson. I am the CEO of New Perceptions North. And, um, I want to let you know, in two thousand and twenty, we opened our doors here in Kings County to provide treatment for substance use disorder in the form of detox, residential and outpatient services. We are now in our fourth year of serving the needs of this community. And to my knowledge, we are the only treatment facility in Kings County that has a residential detox program and are currently trying to expand from six beds to twelve beds. In two thousand and twenty-one, it came to our attention that it did not appear that Kings County was adequately serving the needs of the residents of Kings County with outpatient services for substance use disorder, particularly those that fell under Medi-Cal services. Since two thousand and twenty-one, we have continued to receive ten to fifteen calls per week asking us if we accept Medi-Cal for outpatient services. And of course, we have to say no, and we have to turn those people away. Certainly turning away clients that need immediate help is not the correct course of action. Every county in this state, and yes, including Kings County, is in a fentanyl-induced epidemic. It is the epidemic of the century. And the one area we can make a change in is outpatient services. Yet we seem to constantly be dragging our feet on this issue. And let me please be clear, we are not here to take anything away from other programs. But we are here to find out why Kings County would give a contract to a program from another part of the state instead of giving it to a substance use disorder treatment with a proven track record right here in your own backyard. Especially when our treatment facility is a turnkey operation and could literally open up tomorrow. New Perceptions North is contending that there was possibly been some bias that occurred during the RFP process. Our program director, who is with us today, began reaching out to Behavioral Health in May of two thousand and twenty-three. And she went in person several times to Behavioral Health because the messages she left were not getting returned by Kings County Behavioral Health. Nothing was being answered. Eventually, a meeting was scheduled, but was then canceled and rescheduled multiple times. This continued through August of two thousand and twenty-three. When we were finally able to meet with someone, it was solely because a phone call was made to a quality assurance supervisor within Kings County Behavioral Health by one of the managing partners at New Perceptions North. The first meeting was not helpful as the two people that came had very little knowledge about contacting or, excuse me, contracting with Kings County Behavioral Health for SUD services. We were assured at that time that we would have answers regarding how to begin the contracting process. After extensive emails were sent by New Perceptions and months of waiting, we were informed that an RFP would be. informed that an RFP would be posted in October during a meeting with Kristy Lukey's, Deputy Director, who made it clear she was not happy because an email had been sent out to her to a board of supervised, by a board of supervisors member, and she had received a phone call from that person. This, we believe, speaks to bias, as we are aware that in order for an RFP to make it to the Board of Supervisors for approval, it goes through the Behavioral Health Advisory Board, which we were informed of during our meeting with Kristy Lucas. We believe it is possible that we had not been ignored for nearly five months and felt the need to start making phone calls. We may have been awarded the RFP. We are simply asking you today to reconsider the process, current contract awarded, and that the process begins again on a fair playing field.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions or? No questions?
Not for them always.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no questions, finally, the board of supervisors may ask behavioral health department to respond on the items by the appellant during his presentations.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I think my, my question would be more to counsel just for policy, but if the board went with item B, and it says that the RFP must be reevaluated by individuals other, other than those involved in the initial evaluation committee, then who would that be? Do we have that ability?
Well, you do have that ability. As far as who that would be, I'm going to let Kira respond to that.
So we do, we do RFPs quite often in our county, and when it involves like various stakeholders, we do try to get a diverse committee. So, you know, that is really who is the lead on that RFP. They designate who they want to be on that selection committee.
You could easily put another one.
Oh, yeah. So like, it's just an example in administration because we have RFPs that impact other departments. We usually ask someone from each department to help participate, just to have that very neutral review of it.
Thank you, Kira. Thank you, Chairman.
So I'm not sure if I heard this correctly, but this was a five-member committee. Is that accurate, Dr. Lewis?
That's accurate, yes.
But supposedly they, there, we, we normally had thirteen people or maybe thirteen people eligible to be on the committee?
I think that's a reference to the advisory board, the Behavioral Health Advisory Board. Okay. That is different than the RFP committee, which is put together to evaluate an RFP, usually be, including people who have expertise in the area to determine the scoring of the RFP.
Advisory board is what's on the website then, right?
The Behavioral Health Advisory Board? Yeah, that's, yeah. Yeah. Which is a separate, a completely separate thing.
All right. Dr. Lewis, can you state who was on the advisory board?
On the advisory board or the committee? The committee. We can tell you who's on the committee for the evaluating the RFP, yes.
Okay.
And Kristy, you want to?
Yeah.
Hold up. Can you hear? Okay.
So the, the five individuals that was on the review committee are comprised of behavioral health staff, primarily the quality assurance specialist and the prevention coordinator from our substance use disorder team was on system of care, clinical program manager, our contracts program manager, and our fiscal analyst that oversees our fiscal operations.
Okay, and it was our decision not to accept the contract, correct?
Correct. Yes, they scored it, they presented it to us and walked through the scoring and who had scored high and why, and who had not and why, and that's how we made the determination.
Okay, that wasn't, it wasn't left to you by yourself?
No.
Thank you. Any further questions? We're good? Okay. At this time, the hearing will be closed, and the board will decide to uphold the department decision finding that the RFP process was fair and reasonable. What's your, what's the board direction?
There are actually two other options there, and they're kind of summaries of the options that are in the agenda. I included them just in a, in a more abbreviated form so that it would be more easily understood.
Require proposals submitted to be relevant by a new and different scoring panel or declare RFP a failure and require the department to issue a new RFP. Behavioral Health, you want to begin now?
I think it's up to the board now, right?
It is, is up to the board now to decide which of those three options you think is the most appropriate.
Are there any?
If you believe, if you believe that the RFP was conducted in a fair manner and you don't find fault in that process, then you would find to uphold the RFP. If you think that somehow the process was tainted, then you would, you would choose one of the other two options.
Okay, thank you. I was going off here with item nine.
That's good. Mr. Chairman, I, if I may, I think that just with some concerns that were presented by the appellant at the podium, that I, I think very simply, there's no major fiscal impacts that, to move forward with the item B response, to have all the proposals received in response to the RFP reevaluated by a different committee? And if there is no issue, then move forward.
You want to form a different committee at this time?
Yes, because it says, that item B says that the proposals would be reevaluated by individuals other than those involved in the initial evaluation committee. So Kira says that's a pretty simple process, and I, I think that just protects, protects the county from any allegations that were put on the record at the podium.
Is that a motion?
I can, I'm, I'm happy to make the motion, see where it falls.
Okay, Mr.? Any other questions, comments by the board? Nothing?
Are you calling for a second or?
Yeah, is that a motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I have a second?
Put it out there.
Okay. Do I have any other direction by the board? I'm getting hungry.
Got to do something.
I, I got to go to the restroom, too, so. Uh, Mr. Chair, I, I'll go ahead and move that the protest lacks merit, and go ahead and hold up the behavioral health's recommendation. Motion by Speaker Nevs. Second by Speaker Robinson. Now, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley? Doug Verboen?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes. Okay, four in favor, one against. All right, that's, we're off. Thank you. Okay. We'll move on now to, or remember comments. Speaker Robinson, you want to start today?
For starters, I just want to welcome the chief. We're grateful to have you. Last week, I continued to have homeless meetings. Also, the Methodist Church has reached out to see how, how they can be supportive in the effort. Yesterday, just with other supervisors interviewed for librarian position, and, and I, too, drove around the county roads just to see the damages. So that was, that's it.
Thank you. Speaker Valley?
Due to long process, Mr. Chair, I'll pass.
Speaker Fagundes?
What I have this week was invited to help with the band review of the more this last week, the breakfast, and it turned out really well. I understand it was, what, about fourteen hundred? Yeah, and we had a good staff there that got things done, and I'll let Subler, Nada Lab base on the count, so we have.
Thank you, sir. Very glad you're there. Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Starting back on Wednesday sixth, the, the Kings County Behavioral Health Advisory Board had a retreat in which we had a full agenda of training, information, and goal for the futures. Also on Wednesday, the Cal Beva Public Policy Committee met in Fresno. We welcomed them and a new member, Martha Miranda, from here from Hanford, that will be representing Kings County on, on, on that committee. We learned about the appeals and grievance and complaints to Cal Beva, as well as heard an update on the over sixteen hundred providers. And then we also kind of rounded up the, the afternoon with more knowledge on the health equity side of what, what we're moving to in the future, and that position will need to be filled to receive accreditation when that's reviewed, taken on later on this year. The Kings County Blood Drive also had twenty-eight slots filled in, and I want to thank everyone that donated blood and supported the Central California Blood Center. Thank you very much. St. John's Hall had fish fry on February, on the Friday, the eighth, as a takeout dinner. The committee did an outstanding job. The Lower Liberty Band Concert and Breakfast that Supervisor Fagundes acknowledged, I also want to thank him, John Martin, and Greg Martella. They worked, I think, a new record, a hundred, hundred dozen eggs in about two hours. Of course, they were scrambled. There weren't too many easy over, but they were all scrambled. Jim Keldrick, Keith Fagundes, and David Bischoff helped us on the pancake riddles, and we cooked right about a hundred pounds of pancake batter as well. About thirteen hundred tickets were sold pre-sell, two hundred and fifty on, on ground, so a little over fifteen hundred people, and they're still counting the tickets. And then on Sunday, the Hanford Fraternal Hall held its sixty-ninth annual meeting. There are currently about five hundred and twenty regular members of that organization. Cost of membership has been the same for a hundred dollars a member since nineteen fifty-six, and they're going to start increasing that to, to a new amount in the future. And lager and beans were served for lunch, and so rest of it was a good day. All right, thank you. Thanks.
I traveled outside, went to Arizona. My dad passed away in April, and he was a big part of a car show in Lake Havasu, and they had a garage tour in his honor. And on Wednesday evening, they presented me and my mother a book in his, his honor. And then on Friday, we opened up the garage and had about four hundred participants come through there and say their respects. So a good weekend, and then tell you I leave for Sacramento for a couple days home on Friday. So at that point, at this, we'll go to.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the board received correspondence from the California State Water Resources Control Board dated March fourth regarding a notice of petition requesting changes in water rights of the Department of Water Resources for the Delta Conveyance Project. The board also received correspondence from the California State Water Resources Control Board on March sixth regarding the abridged notice of public hearing for Site Reservoir Project. Board received correspondence from Los Angeles County Sanitation District dated March eighth regarding the appointment of Riley Jones for the vacant Tulare Lake Reclamation District, seven sixty-one. The board lastly received correspondence on March eighth from the United States Department of Interior regarding a notice of a decision relating to an application filed with Santa Rosa Rancheria to have real property known as the Alboroto Parcels accepted by the USA in a trust. For upcoming events, Kings County Behavioral Health will host their Veteran Service Support Group March twelfth from five thirty to seven thirty. That's today. The Kettelman City Branch Library will host its movie time on March thirteenth, tomorrow from three to four thirty PM. Refreshments will be provided, and this is free and open to the public. City of Hanford and the Visalia, in the Valley Community Small Business Development Center will hold an open house and ribbon cutting on March fourteenth. At the Hanford Amtrak Station, Adventist Health will host a free wellness clinic on March sixteenth from nine to two. There will be medical and dental services, health advice, and free haircuts for the community. And next week will be the Kings County Youth and Government Day on Tuesday, March nineteenth from eight thirty to one thirty. So next Tuesday will be a busy meeting. We'll have a lot of students in here.
Were those free haircuts then? I'm on leave.
At Adventist Health, they will be hosting a wellness clinic on March sixteenth. For health, health advice, free haircuts, community resources.
Got it.
For those in need. The Library Hanford Branch will host its Maker Monday, March eighteenth from three thirty to four thirty, where participants can learn about making paper kites. Also, don't forget that the Kings County Newspaper Microphone Online via Digital Reel has its Kings County digitized newspaper collection from far back as eighteen eighty-nine. For upcoming agenda items, again, next week, Youth and County Government Day, we have a claim for damages from administration. County Council has some position for advanced county council. CDA has a three-year grant application for some CBG funds. FIRE has an item regarding a transfer of funds. HSA has an item regarding housing assistance and prevention program for a grant application. IT has some secure cloud and annual renewal agreement, and then Public Works has a local transportation funds claim resolution. And lastly, Sheriff has just an agreement with a vendor. That's my report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we'll go to closed session. Today, we're going to get litigation one case, government code section five four nine five six point nine. Significant litigation one case, government code section five nine five six point nine, threat of litigation on condition in Kings County Juvenile Center. Personal matter, government code section five four nine five seven, public employee appointment, library director, and conference liberty negotiator, government code section five four nine five seven point six, negotiator Kira Martinez, Colonel Lee Shay Johnson of Liberty, Catherine Whitmore, and that will be for General Unit Clocia, Judge Clocia, Blue Collar SEIU, Denton Deputy Association, Firefighter Association, Deputy Sheriff Association, Probation Officer Association, Prosecutor Association, Unrepresented Management, and litigation initiated formally titled Sierra Club and All versus California Department of Water Resources and whatever, one twenty Sacramento County Superior Court. And then I think we have to be back here at two o'clock for Seth's appeal. Thank you very much. Thanks for coming.